If we get one more counselor, we can actually have a meeting. Almost. Mark's coming. Almost have a quorum. If Linda sits back down in her chair. You sure that that's a pretty short glass of water? Is that gonna be enough?
I think you're muted, Linda.
I'm ready. This is bourbon.
Whoa. You're gonna have to get up for other reasons, Keith.
I might. That's iced tea. It does it does have that effect on older bodies.
I've noticed that.
Are we live?
If that's bourbon, this is vodka. Yeah, no. Just iced tea.
Well, if everyone else has got something to drink, now I'm getting thirsty. I'm getting a glass of water.
Danielle, and now we just need Andrew.
Keith, who is that poster behind you?
This one?
Yeah.
That's my daughter Isabel was senior night for volleyball.
Nice.
She keeps an eye on me. Here earlier, but I do have my Gina beer for afterwards.
Knock it off. It's awesome.
For those of you who are looking for Gina beer, it's available at Portsmouth Liquor Store or whatever they call themselves now on West Main Road there.
I don't know what they.
Yeah, we're good. We're good. I'm just trying to make sure we get. Audio devices are muted.
Ms. Roberts?
We're good. All right. Okay, welcome, everyone, to our June 22 Town Council meeting. Before we get started, I'll just go over a couple of the rules. For those of you who are on the phone, it's star nine to mute and unmute your phone. Star six will raise your indicate you're raising a question. For those of you that are streaming, you have your icons on your screen that will allow us to identify you when you have a question. Anybody that is speaking, please provide your name and address for our town clerk so that we can properly identify you. That we will.
I think you said it was star six to ask a question. I think it's actually spelled wrong.
Oh.
To ask a question, star six.
Yeah, sorry about that. I messed that up. I reversed it. It's star star six to mute and unmute and star nine to ask a question. Sorry about that. Now, if we could all stand where our allegiance and a moment of silence for our minimum three.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Hey, will we get started? We'll go through the role call.
Ms. Ujifusa?
President.
Ms. Abbott? Ms. Abbott?
Here.
Still muted.
Sorry, I lost audio completely and had to switch over to my phone, but I'm I'm here. I have audio now, so here.
Mr. Hamilton?
President.
Mr. Katzen?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Thank you.
Here. And I just wanted also indicated in council chambers that this here town clerk, Rich Rayner, town administrator, and Lisa Mills are financial director is here. Sorry, please. What happens is because of the image in the screen, Ms. Mills is not displayed, but she is off to the side and Ms. Mills has been present during our meetings. I know that there was some.
Disinformation?
But I do want to reiterate to Ms. Mills, our director of finance had been in attendance at these meetings or her screen. She's just off the screen. So we'll try to we'll try to do a better job in communicating that moving forward. Onto the president's executive summary. I do want to pass along our condolences to the family of Kathleen B. Oden, who passed away over the weekend. Oden was a former town clerk for 10 years, and prior to that, she was 17 years as the deputy town clerk for the town enforcement. We want to pass along our condolences to the family. That we move on to our consent agenda.
Keith Hamilton, motion to approve as presented.
Len Katzman, second.
And motion, all those in there?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katzen?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. As we have minutes for our June eight council meeting along with the executive.
Move to receive as presented.
Len Katzman, second.
All those in there?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katzen?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Hang on. We have our town administrator's report, Mr. Ray.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen listening in. First, a quick update regarding our COVID-19 pandemic. Rhode Island's cases of COVID-19 have thankfully been on a steady decline. So on Friday, Governor Ramondo announced some of the details of the phase three of our state's reopening. Some of those tentative details include a change in the size of gatherings. So for social gatherings, this would include weddings, parties, networking, that's catered events. For indoor settings, that limit in phase three anticipated to be 50 to 75 people. And for outdoor settings, 75 to 150 people. In places of public interaction, we're talking retail, restaurants, gyms, museums, theaters, houses of worship, parks and beaches. The limits for indoor settings would be increased from 50 to 66% of capacity. You can still maintain six foot social distancing. And then for large venues of assembly such as concert halls or auditoriums that wish to have 250 people, I have to submit this plan to the state for approval. The limits for outdoor settings is that there is no cap, but you have to maintain six foot social distancing. And you would again need to require a a plan for approval ahead of time. Just as a reminder, though, we are not in phase three, so the guidelines for phase two remain in effect. Lastly, the school department is working to develop various plans for next year to ensure that all schools operate in a safe and productive manner. We will update families as soon as possible so that they can plan accordingly. For the 2020 to 2021 school year, just a reminder, all districts will be operating with the same statewide calendar. I'd like to announce that Portsmouth has been informed by the Rhode Island Foundation that we have been approved for a community grant of $10,000 for the purchase of a of an improved walkway at Sandy Point Beach. We do anticipate $3,000 in-kind donation, which will come from the approved capital improvement plan and in-kind service support from DPW. With respect to the stone walls project that I announced a number of months ago, that project, despite COVID pandemic, is still moving ahead. As a reminder, this will be held at the 70 complex in the vicinity of Brown House. This project is going to be done in partnership with the Preservation Society for County and Preserve Rhode Island. We held it. We did hold a volunteer program information session tonight prior to this council meeting. And some of the details of that program are that training will be conducted July 13th and 14th from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And the program will run weekdays from July 13th for seven weeks through August 28th. Those sessions will be weekdays in two shifts, one morning shift from 9:00 to 12:00 and one afternoon shift from 12:30 to 3:30. Due to COVID, the volunteers will work. No more than eight volunteers in any one shift. The Preservation Society will coordinate volunteer schedule. And we would expect that the volunteers will work three hours a week for a total of 21 hours over the course of those seven weeks. We look forward to working with them. We're very excited for our participation and for finding being able to get this project to open. With regard to the financial software installation, the installation of the new finance and accounting software is on track. And we are scheduled to go live next week. The pandemic, without doubt, has hampered our training program, and then everything has had to be conducted remotely. This has been a chore for everyone involved and now speaking to the staff. I just want to thank each and every one of you, both on the town and school side, for pushing through this arduous process to make things better for Portsmouth. Your work has not gone unnoticed, and I thank you for your perseverance. Just as a reminder, lastly, July 4th this year does fall on Saturday, a Saturday. And as such, town offices will be closed on Friday, July 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make a suggestion as to the COVID-19 updates for Mr. Rayner and staff. Seeing that the governor has dropped to three days a week, I think we could probably deal with add a bare maximum three days a week from the administrator, since there's a lot of other things on the plate to get done as well. Doesn't have to be a motion, but I just don't see why we need a report every day when the governor is only doing it three days a week.
I would agree. Thank you. I don't think Mr. Ray will object. All right. Moving on. We have old business number one. It's determine operating and implementation guidelines for Sandy Point, McCory Point Beach.
Andrew's president, this has been a continuation from the reports that we've given over the last two council meetings. And so to bring everybody up to speed, as a reminder, following measures have been implemented at Sandy Point and McCory Point. There's beach pass parking only, variable message boards with residents only. Messages have been posted at the entrances to both areas. We have put in place social distancing signage. We have established one-way entry and exit lanes. There is a 65 car limit at Sandy Point for 150 person limit at Sandy Point. So if you reach 65 cars and not 150 people, the lot is closed, but people can still continue to come in. If we reach 150 people at Sandy Point, then the lot is closed and we discourage people from coming to the beach. It is resident-only parking on the closest side streets to both those areas. And police have been tasked to increase controls, enforce vehicle and pedestrian traffic and parking ordinances monitor non-resident use and maintain police presence at Park Avenue in an effort to encourage compliance with current COVID guidelines. Specifically, to Sandy Point, we are seeing more people visiting now that the weather is nicer and school is out. We have seen a decrease in the number of beach parties and the number of issues related to college and high school young adults. Since my last report, the last council meeting, there were 48 parking citations, none on the resident street and zero for alcohol. Attendants have been on duty Wednesday through Sunday from 10 to 4:00, and we will be extending that to 5:00 starting this week. The recreation director and police chief are continuing to work together to enforce residents-only parking and the number of personnel allowed at the beach. We have had reports of residents trying to enforce these measures, and I want to state publicly that this is strongly discouraged. People should report any issues to the police or town employees and not take matters into their own hands. And lastly, with respect to Sandy Point, we are seeing a significant increase in the number of people being dropped off. Many of these people are entering the beach through private property or from the Land Manor House area. The police are aware of it, and we are doing our best to encourage compliance with current regulations. Respect to McCory Point, we have seen a large uptick in visitors on weekends. Recreation has posted an attendant turn fee times on busiest days, which up till now has reduced the need for police patrols. We are starting to get reports of more people at McCory after hours. Since the last report, we have issued five parking citations, and we are getting reports of fires. However, there have been no citations for uncommitted fires, either the people have dispersed by the time the police get there, or we find out the morning after that there's going to fire, or more often not, the people who have the fire do have a fire permit. The police have responded to calls at McCory Point 244 times in the last month. Officers were at McCory 108 times over the same period last year, which represents a 126% increase in police presence at McCory Point. Limiting town-owned resources to residents has created unintended consequences in other areas of town. Up to this point, we have concentrated on enforcing guidelines at Sandy and McCory Point. As our part-time workforce has become more available, we are now starting to target our police patrols more effectively in other areas of town. Starting this weekend, we will also have an extra officer on patrol Saturday, Sunday. Recommend as a plan for moving forward that we keep in place the current guidelines that you have previously adopted. Additionally, last meeting, we discussed a new sign from McCory, a more visibly appealing sign from McCory. The Director of Public Works has developed a plan to consolidate all the current signage into one sign patterned after our standard welcome enforcement sign. But we will, we have held off on that awaiting a council decision regarding permitting or unpermitting fires at McCory. With that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
If you have any questions, comments from any of the counselors?
Yes, Mr. President, Keith Hamilton. With phase three opening up on July 1st, does that give us more room to increase the levels of occupancy at Sandy Point to 200 or 250? Or at least maybe 75% of the parking lot?
Not really, because the in phase three, it's anticipated right now that each person would have a lot of 100 square feet, and then you have to add on top of that six-foot social distancing. So we'll look at the numbers, but it may be a few more, but not much more than we already calculated.
Okay.
Are there any? I don't know if there's any. Comments? Hands up. Mr. Kelly? I just waved. Okay. Put your hand up. Are they in the same order? Okay, okay, so we'll go to sell, Chrisella first.
Mr. President, just remind everybody that this is not the the fire permit agenda item. About the fire permit, it's the next agenda item. Well, they're down.
Hi, is this Mr. Chrisella?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is South Carcellar, 63 Leaps Road. And I'm not going to discuss the fire permit in this in this point here. But you brought up the parking on Annette and Williams Street, McCory Beach. About a year ago, we had a meeting about McCory Beach, and we were assured that we residents would be allowed to park. Now, I understand COVID has presented some challenges. Right now, I would like some clarity on what those resident parking only signs mean on Annette and Williams Street, particularly because we were pretty much assured that we could move our vehicles off of the beach. Up onto those streets so that we can continue to fish down at the high tide line as a Portsmouth resident. Now, I was shocked to see that those signs were put up, resident parking only. But with COVID, I kind of understand that why they may be there. So I have a two-part question. First, who exactly can park there? Two, will the signs be taken down that is going?
Yeah, obviously, this is an unintended consequence of our measures in response to the COVID pandemic. So it's a good question. When we implemented this, it was for resident parking only, the people that lived on those streets. But I think it's a valid discussion, and I would hardly recommend that we make it enforcement for resident parking. So there was no, I don't think we had any intention to limit enforcement residents from parking on those streets. The intent was to keep people who did not have parking passes from spurring the rules and overwhelming those streets. So, Mr. President, that is something we can certainly address with police chief.
I would I would agree with you, Mr. Ray. I think our intent was to provide parking for Portsmouth residents, specifically down at McCory, where we did last year, if you are correct, indicate to the people that would be down at the beach past 10 o'clock that they would need to move their vehicles off the beach if they would continue, and they would be allowed to remain down at the beach. So it was an unintended consequence here or oversight. I do not believe that we have ticketed any Portsmouth residents, but we do need some clarification here. I don't know how I don't know offhand what the process would be for, you know, Portsmouth residents to be able to park on these side streets. I mean, we don't have a parking pass.
We do.
Parking passes, but we need to come up with something for our residents, you know, to allow them to park on these streets.
We can discuss this with the police chief. Chief Peters, I think you're on the line. I think a good compromise would be, obviously, if you have a beach pass or transfer station sticker for a resident, and we see that on your vehicle, then you should go up.
Sure. And there may be there may be some instances where someone does not have a beach pass or a a transfer station sticker and are still a resident of the town. So we will do our best here to continue to work through this. But our intent would be to allow, you know, Portsmouth residents to park on those on those side streets where it currently says resident parking.
Mr. President, this is Chief Peters. If I could just add something.
Yes, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, just to confirm what you said, that is correct. We have not issued any tickets to any Portsmouth residents. I believe the last meeting, I said we had issued only one ticket, and that remains, and that was a resident of Massachusetts. That was quite important. I referenced to Sandy Point. There have been no violations regards to William.
And I think, well, this is really a two-part issue because we also do not want residents on those streets, you know, kicking cars out that are also Portsmouth residents. So we do have to be careful, and, you know, people do have to understand that those are town streets and people are allowed, you know, people are allowed to park there. I would hope that people would be respectful of other people's properties during this time. And, you know, really, at any time, you should be respectful of any place you're parking within the town enforcement. So I think we'll continue to work through this process. We seem to keep refining it. It's not going to go away. So as long as we continue to be aware of the situations as they come up, we can work through them. And I think this is a good compromise for should get out to the Portsmouth residents that, you know, they will be allowed to park in those streets without you ever getting a ticket. Okay, back to Mr. Carsella.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add in, I my recollection was that we actually did intend for the resident only on those few streets to apply to the residences that are on those streets. But we are implementing measures relating to anticipating our beaches being sought out by those who have been shut out of Middletown and Newport and other beaches. So we were expecting the higher turnout that we are seeing. But also, there are unintended consequences and we're learning. So I am, I think we should allow any Portsmouth resident to park on any Portsmouth street if it is legal.
Thank you, Mr. Katzen. Mr. Carsella is still, okay, Mr. Carsella?
I just want to close it out since I brought it up. That's great. I just was, that's not what was in the in the newspaper. It was totally different. I'm really happy with what was discussed. I do want to say something else, since I go down there a lot with my family. It has really helped, guys. The Portsmouth only use of the beach and the restriction on those, just the Portsmouth only use of the beach has really cut down what I I should the beach from what I've seen and just some unpleasant trees that we've seen in the past. So I'm in full support of keeping it Portsmouth residence only. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all set with this item. We don't need to take any action.
Not if we're not changes to the current practices now.
On to our monthly financial report. Is it mic on? I'm not sure. I want to see if Mr. Roberts can hear.
I'm a councilor.
That's awful.
This update represents 91.7% of the current fiscal year. Our revenues are currently at 91.4% compared to last year, 93%. Our interest rate is 88%, same as last year. There are no significant wire or ECH transfers to be drawn. Also, the monthly report for the dinner house remains 21.
Mills? Do we have any questions from councilors?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. President. Mr. Ray Mills, if you feel comfortable, we're going to be okay finishing in the black come July 1st?
Yeah, oh, I'll speak and then turn over to Lisa. Yes, we do. I mean, it's you, you notice that revenues are currently down a bit, but we attribute that to the fact that we extended the grace period today into June. So there, we're getting a lot of tax receipts late, later than we normally would. We did free spending earlier, so you see that we're only at 88%, but we're essentially almost done with the year. So I feel pretty good. Turn over to Lisa.
I agree with Mr. Ray's assessment. Excuse me, it'll be a small surplus, but there'll be a surplus.
Thank you. Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Captain?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, on to old business number three. It's a final approval of the proposed FY 2021 budget. At this point, the, the council has had several budget meetings, and we have completed our public hearing on the budget. So tonight is strictly council discussion regarding the budget. There'll be the vote, and then if approved, we'll have the reading of the draft budget quarters. So are there any comments, questions from our councilors?
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Linda Ujufuza? I just want to say that I believe that the town and the schools have responded in extraordinary ways to COVID-19, and I want to thank our staff for working countless extra hours with no overtime pay to deal with the enormous changes that COVID-19 has required, while always focusing on helping our most vulnerable citizens. Everything from establishing new procedures for operating town properties to organizing and running the food bank at St. Barnabas, to helping local businesses. And of course, a shout out to our amazing school staff for implementing students' learning and the awesome graduation and other activities. Just so inspiring, and a big thank you. I strongly urge everyone to educate themselves about what we're doing by reading reports at PortsmouthRI.com. I also like to highlight that Portsmouth offers tax exemptions and deferrals for our citizens most in need. So please contact our tax assessor's office to discuss options at 401-683-1214. Does, did we fund everything we wanted to fund? No. Did we cut everything everyone wanted to cut? No. But our job is to balance low taxes, providing essential services. And I'm proud to say we've kept our taxes in the bottom one quarter of all towns, offering schools and full-time first responders. And we've renewed excellent schools and town services. I want to again thank everyone for all their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ujufuza. I, I do want to just correct something. I said that the draft budget ordinance is we'll be reading the, the ordinance relating to the levy and collection of taxes. I, I misspoke there when I read off the agenda, so it's not a draft of our, of our budget. It's the actual, it is the ordinance. Just wanted to clarify that. So is there any further discussion from our councilors? We have a motion to
President?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to that the council adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Captain in the second.
Okay. Looks like he's talking, but he's muted.
My bad. I think we have to approve the budget first before we approve the ordinance.
Right, so we, we, I was getting ready, we were clarifying the motion in the second because of it was, it wasn't clear.
So that was my bad. Sorry about that.
We were just, we're, we're taking care of it. All good.
Just want to make sure you say your names.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Eric Hamilton?
Just to make sure what I'm voting on, is the motion to approve the budget and the ordinance as presented? Or is just to approve the budget? There's two different ordinance, two different motions we should have here. It should be an approval. We have a provisional budget. We have to officially pass the budget, and then we have to do the ordinance.
Okay.
We have to remove it from the provisional stage to a final approval, and then approve the ordinance.
Right.
And I don't think we approve the ordinance until it's, till it's been read.
Great. Okay, so let's just back up and, and let's take it one step at a time. So first is to, is a motion to approve do we have a motion to approve the 2021?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi, and thank you.
Mr. Captain?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. The motion passes seven to zero. Nothing of the budget. So now it will be reading of the ordinance?
Yeah, if Mr. Gavin's on here, I believe we read the ordinance and then we vote on it. We don't vote on the ordinance and then repeat it.
If I may ask, I know that's what we do. I'm wondering why. We, we don't read out other ordinances before we adopt them. Seems unnecessary, but if there's a reason for it, I guess, but.
But town's always done, there used to be a budget resolution, we read the resolution, approve it.
I see.
Do an ordinance. I would agree. I don't think it needs to be, you know, technically done that way, but that's, that's traditionally how it's been done. There's no problem with doing that.
Okay, so let's, this Wes was all ready to go. I do not want to, you know, deprive her of her moment. When we do the, the renewals.
An ordinance relating to the levy and collection of taxes. Be it ordained that the town council of the town of Portsmouth, at a regular town council meeting, legally assembled on the 22nd day of June 2020, hereby levies and orders the collection of one, a property tax on the ratable real estate and tangible personal property, said levy to be based on the assessment made as of the 31st day of December 2019, as subsequently adjusted for new construction or damaged or destroyed buildings according to law. Two, an excise tax on all registered motor vehicles and trailers, said levy to be prorated over the calendar year prior to the year in which said excises are levied and built, said year after, here, here and after, being referred to as the calendar year of proration. As provided by Section 44-34.1-1 of the General Laws of Rhode Island, a $4,000 total exemption is applied. Total taxes prior to any adjustments for subsequent increases or decreases of the assessment shall be a sum of not more than $57,734,248. Dead taxes for ordinary expenses and charges for the payment of interest and indebtedness in whole or in part of said town, for the payment of town, of the town portion of the state tax, and for other purposes as specified in the budget and warrant items, approved at this meeting as authorized by law. The said property tax shall be unproportioned upon 100% of the assessed valuation as determined by the tax assessor on the 31st day of December 2019, at 12 o'clock midnight, according to law. Any subsequent adjustments to the assessed valuation shall be unapportioned unapportioned, oh, portion, uh, now, now, apportioned on a prorated basis during the calendar year according to law. And said expenses shall be apportioned on the prorata basis during the calendar year of proration, according to law. The above amount shall be exclusive of veterans' exemptions, and for those of the elderly, as provided by law, at the time of tax rolls are certified. The maximum gross property tax levies of $56,145,283 does not exceed the 4% tax levy cap. The fiscal year 2021 tax levies have excluded motor vehicle excise tax for the purpose of determining tax levy growth pursuant to Article 11 of the 2017-H5175 sub-A as amended. The tax assessor shall, upon completion of said assessment, date, certify, and sign the same and deliver to and deposit the same in the office of the town clerk. The town clerk, upon receipt of said assessment, shall forthwith make a copy of the same and deliver it to the finance director in his, her, or her capacity as treasurer, who shall forthwith issue and affix to the said copy of a warrant under his or her hand directed to the, to the collector of taxes of, of said town, commanding him to proceed and collect said taxes of the person in his state's libel therefor. Said taxes shall be due and payable on and between the first day of July and the first day of September 2020, and all taxes remaining unpaid on said first day of September 2020 shall carry until collected a penalty at the rate of 12% per annum upon real estate and tangible personal property, and a penalty of 12% per annum upon registered motor vehicles and trailers. Said taxes may be paid in four installments. The first installment may be, to be 25% on or before the first day of September 2020, and the remaining installments as follows. 25% on the first day of December 2020, 25% on the first day of March 2021, 25% on the first day of June 2021. A grace period of seven business days will be extended for each installment period. Each installment of taxes, if paid on or before the last day of each installment period successfully and in order, shall be free from any charge for interest. If the first installment or any succeeding installments of taxes is not paid by the last day of the respective installment period or periods as they occur, then the whole tax or remaining unpaid balance of the tax, as the case may be, shall be, shall immediately become due and payable and carried until collected a penalty at the rate of 12% per annum. Provided, however, that the option to pay said taxes in equal quarterly installments shall not be, shall not apply to any tax levy in the amount not in excess of $100, in which case the tax shall be payable in a single installment. Whenever there is a subsequent adjustment to said assessment because of new construction or damage or destroyed buildings, the resulting additional or decreased taxes shall be administered, due, payable and collectible in ordinance in accordance with Sections 44-5-13.13 and 44-5-13-14 of the General Laws of Rhode Island, as amended, and any ordinance of the town of Portsmouth. Be it ordained further that the town, town council of the town of Portsmouth at a regular town council meeting on the 22nd of June 2020 hereby orders that the tax assessor of this town shall assess and apportion a property tax on the inhabitants and the ratable real estate and tangible personal property of the town of Portsmouth as of the 31st day of December 2019, at 12 o'clock midnight, according to law, assesses and apportion adjustments to the property taxes on the new construction or removal of damaged or destroyed buildings in the town of Portsmouth, according to law, and apportion an excise tax on the inhabitants and the registered motor vehicles and trailers of the town of Portsmouth on a prorata basis for the calendar year of proration, according to law. Ordained that the budget amended carrying the gross appropriation of $66,607,971, together with the following order in the accounting of refunds, state aid, federal aid, or other credits not specifically stated in the foregoing budget, that the town treasurer be directed to credit such funds to the department concerned, and such funds are hereby appropriated by the town council at a regular meeting on June 22nd, 2020, for the use of departments concerned, provided, however, that such receipts for the school department budget be accepted. Ordained that the town treasurer is authorized on behalf of the town enforcement to issue notes in anticipation of the receipt of taxes levied in this fiscal year, as authorized by Section 45-12-4 of the Rhode Island General Laws, 1956. As amended, the outstanding principle of the amount of which at any one time shall not exceed the amount permitted by Section 45-12-4 of the Rhode Island General Laws, 1956, as amended. The note shall be signed by the town treasurer in his or her capacity as director of finance and countersigned by the president of the town council. The note shall contain such terms, conditions, and details, and bear such date, date or dates, and mature at such time or times from their date of issuance as the town treasurer may determine. Ordained that the books and accounts of all departments handling town funds be audited by the State Bureau of Audit, or by an independent certified public accountant for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. Ordained further that all monies collected by the town clerk and the tax clerk to be turned over to the town treasurer monthly, or at most frequent intervals, as accumulations may warrant. Gross appropriation, $66,607,971. Less estimated school receipts of $3,846,384. Less estimated miscellaneous general fund receipts of $5,266,573, leading to be raised by taxes, $57,495,14. Less estimated prior years and prorated collections of $1,355,000. Plus estimated uncollectible spread of $1,594,234. Maximum tax levy, $57,734,57, $734,248. Kevin McAdam, your town council president.
Thank you, Mrs. West. I know I couldn't have done it any.
We need to pay more for the wording.
Yeah.
Move to approve the ordinance as read.
Second. Keith Hamilton, second.
So we have a motion and a second? David?
Ms. Ujufuza?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Captain?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Adyer?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, on to new business, discussion action. Invitation or request to join in an Aquinic Island grant for the Healthy Soils, Healthy Seas Rhode Island Project via the Community Compost and Food Waste Reduction Project. We have, um, she was, well, there is. Hold on one second, just move on.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
We got you.
Great, great. So, uh, thank Council President and fellow councilors. Congratulations on approving the budget. This, this grant here is a first round of funding from the twenty-eighteen Farm Bill. And specifically, it's, it's got a funding opportunity of a total of nine hundred thousand dollars where they're looking to give out at least ten awards or at most twenty awards, uh, ranging from forty-five thousand to ninety thousand dollars. And it's really to advance community composting work. One of the suggestions in the grant definition is for partnerships, and with partnerships you can apply for up to ninety thousand dollars. So currently, still working with the town of Middletown, but I have gotten agreement from the city of Newport and would welcome to work with the town of Portsmouth to really advance food composting as part of a waste reduction and really environmental stewardship program that we already have underway on Aquinic Island with the Healthy Soils, Healthy Seas Rhode Island Project. We're thankful for the town of Portsmouth for allowing a hub spot to be put at the transfer station, as well as one at Clement's Market, which allows people to divert their food scraps at a lower cost than curbside pickup by bringing their food scraps to a drop-off location. So whether it's, you know, the, the benefits of composting for the soil, for community gardens, for the retention property for stormwater, or diverting prepared foods to people that are hungry, there's a multitude of initiatives underway in this project, and this would really provide additional important funding to get more people on Aquinic Island, specifically in Portsmouth, actively involved with composting. So happy to address any questions. And we do have a little bit of a brisk timeline of it's due at the end of this week, and welcome to address any questions and hopefully the council can support being part of this project and this grant.
I'll make a motion that we councillor Abbott, I'll make a motion that we join in the application. I feel the Healthy Sea, Soils, Healthy Seas program is a wonderful program for our island. I participated by selecting my own compost at home, and I think you guys are doing a great job, Dave. Thank you very much. So I move that we approve the request to join the grant and open for discussion.
Ms. Mujikusa, I second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from council?
Mr. President, Mr. Keith Hamilton, just, just to confirm, and it's in the backup, but the match for this will be paid, will be done through, the cash match will be done through, or I don't care if it's cash or it's, either way, but it's going to be done through clean notions. More of a statement than a, than a question.
Yeah, councillor Hamilton, that is correct, and the grant, and the match is coming through a grant that we've received from Eleventh Hour Racing.
Fantastic.
Excellent. Uh, I don't believe there's any more questions, comments. So we have a motion and a second. Follows and David.
Ms. Mujikusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Adyer?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Who, on to new business number two. It's a resolution to develop a plan for a community choice aggregation program. Mr. Cliftkey?
Good evening, councilors. This is Rich Tulipski, seventy-nine, from Waltham Drive. I'm the Director of Business Development. The purpose of the brief today is to provide information on a potential plan for power supply to the town to achieve better rates. The goal of the presentation is to gain town council approval for the town administrator to develop a plan for energy aggregation for subsequent public hearings and ultimately town council's decision on implementing the plan. To brief us today, we have Jamie Rhodes and Patrick Roach from Good Energy, one of several potential consultants who could help us in developing and executing a plan. Jamie, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Members of the Portsmouth Council, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you here today. I'm going to go through some of the slides here and explain what community choice aggregation is and kind of how the program works. And then hopefully there'll be an opportunity for some discussion or anything that might not be clear the first time through. So if we go to the, the next slide, I want to first tell you, once again, my name is Jamie Rhodes. I'm the Sales Manager as well as the Reputatory Attorney for Good Energy. We also have on the line here our Director of Innovation who works with towns to actually develop aggregation plans and implement them. So we have another voice on the line that can help out as needed. Good Energy has been working for ten years on managing aggregation programs for municipalities. Right now, our New England team is working both Rhode Island and Massachusetts with fifty-three current clients in Massachusetts and four clients in Rhode Island, which are Providence, South Kingstown, Barrington, and Central Falls. Our current active programs are obvious, are serving about two hundred, two, two thousand five hundred gigawatt hours, and over one million residents are already covered by the aggregation programs in Massachusetts that we run. And we've been working with a local organization called Green Energy Consumers Alliance to really pioneer how to support the development of renewable energy as part of these aggregation programs. So we go to the next slide. The purpose of an aggregation program is to take advantage of the competitive market for electricity supply on behalf of the residents and small businesses here in Portsmouth. So just as like a quick picture here, the delivery of our electricity will still be done through National Grid. It's always National Grid in Portsmouth. They are the regulated utility. But what we're talking about is changing who actually supplies the electricity for the town, or not for the town, but for the residents and small businesses in the town, because this is a situation where we can in fact choose who our suppliers are and in, and through a competitive bidding process actually achieve some cost savings for our residents. So if you go to the next slide, so the, this piece that National Grid right now is your standard, your default offer of electricity supply. The, they're allowed to do it because they're a state-regulated entity. I'm sure you all know all about that. But right now, the type of electricity that's being supplied to Portsmouth residents and businesses is chosen by National Grid in conjunction with state regulators. There has to be a default option because if somebody moves in and turns on the lights, they need electricity flowing. And what we're proposing is to change that default and make it so that the choice of who's supplying electricity is a decision that the town gets to make. And really bring that question of who's supplying electricity and what type from the state level to the local level and allow both Portsmouth residents and Portsmouth, you all, the political folks in Portsmouth, to be able to make that, to vet and help make that decision of what that default supply is. So if you go to the next slide, the four primary goals of our, of community choice aggregation is, the first one is by pooling, pooling all of the electricity needs together of, of our residents, we can get lower rates than a national grid has to offer. We can bulk purchase our electricity and we can take that out to bid and get lower rates. What also we get is a rate stability. So we are able to lock in a electricity rate for two, anywhere from one to three years, so that instead of right now the rate's changing every six months, everyone will have a predictable, known rate that they have for the entire, for the length of that contract. This, this is also able to use and support more clean energy because we're, with this savings, we're also able to, we're also able to increase the amount of renewable energy that's being used to supply the needs of Portsmouth residents. And we can do that and still have lower rates than a national grid offers. And then the other option, the other goal is to expand consumer choice, and this is to allow residents to have more options than just what National Grid currently has available and to expand their choices for where their electricity supply comes from. So to walk through these goals, one by one, so the first one, if we go to the next slide, is secure competitive pricing. The reason why good energy and aggregation programs are able to beat National Grid's rate is that unlike National Grid, we can go to market and go to bid for electricity supply at any time. National Grid is limited to four days every year, and whatever the market rates are at that time, that's what they get. While we're able to look at the market and predict, not just predict where things are moving to, but also enter the market at a time when costs are lowest, lowest. And also we have the buying power of not just one individual going out to a competitive market where they don't have that much buying power. We don't have leverage as an individual, but if we pool together the, the demands of all of our residents that are on that standard service, they actually have significant buying power, are able to demand lower prices from, from the competitive suppliers. Now, we put a little caveat here is that savings compared to standard offer cannot be guaranteed, and we say that because I don't know what National Grid's rate is going to be six months from now. I don't know what it's going to be twelve months from now. So since I don't have a crystal ball, I can't say that we can guarantee that we're going to beat it at every turn, but we will get to our track record at one of the next slides. So if we go to the, the next one, this is the idea of price stability, is that we fix a rate for a period of twelve to thirty-six months. And so while the National Grid rate varies up and down over that period, we have a single rate that provides budgeting stability as well as cost control for individuals. So go to the next slide. And as I mentioned before, we, we encourage towns to make, to use some of this savings to increase the amount of renewable energy that they, that is used in our default programs, as it's a, it's an opportunity for us to move faster towards achieving climate goals that individual communities might have, but also to support the needs of those that are building renewable energy projects by purchasing the renewable energy credits from those. So if we go to the next slide, we're, the, the next piece is, the, this is just a quick picture. This is not showing what the prices are. This is just to show the amount of renewable energy. So if you look all the way on the right, the National Grid rate, the standard for renewable energy is seventeen and a half percent right now. That steps up every year. And then the standard product that the aggregation program would provide, which is the one on the left, is we, we generally work with our clients to add ten percent extra new renewable energy to that, to bring it to a total of twenty-seven and a half percent. And once again, that's still, and that's, the goal of that is to still be under National Grid rates, so that there's a price savings and increased renewable energy. And when we talk about providing additional options, the optional products here are also to allow residents that want one hundred percent renewable energy to opt up to that program and pay, and pay a little bit extra to be able to achieve that, but then also offer to folks that want to maximize the savings they have for, for their electricity supply, to opt down to the, the state minimum renewable energy content. And that way they're able to once again maximize their cost savings. And so on the next slide, we have the, actually just go to, not that one, let's go to the next one. Let's, we'll just kind of move a little faster here. The, by expanding consumer choice, what we currently have now is standard offer service. That's what's available. That's what happens when you move in, you call National Grid, turn our electricity on. This is what's supplied to you. Now, there's lots of thirty, there's a number of third-party suppliers out there, the Acadia's or Arcadia Power, I think it's Green Mountain Power. There're the solicitations we get in the mail very often. Those are the situation, if you want to go out on your own, you can sign up a third-party supplier. You often get introductory rates, but then they don't have requirements to tell you what the rate will be in the future. There's often balloon payments, not balloon payments, but balloon, ballooning of the, of the price that they charge. With the aggregation program, we're able to, those, those offers, those options are still there, but the aggregation makes it so that there's a default program, which is the one that would, that the town would negotiate, but then also the opt-up and opt-down. So it's increasing the options of each resident to be able to choose the electricity supply that works best for them. So in the next slide, we have a quick, just, Somerville, Massachusetts is one of our longer-running programs in Massachusetts. And also just is an indicative of the success that we've had. So the blue line is the rates that were being paid by residents through Eversource, who is a utility in Somerville, and the orange line is the rate that we were able to negotiate with the support of the Somerville Town Council. As you can see, at every period, other aggregation rate was lower than the utility rate. And then for the first two years of that, that included an additional five percent of renewable energy, and then in twenty, beginning in twenty twenty, they bumped that up to an additional ten percent of renewable energy. You can see that the savings over the lifetime contract are cumulative over each period. And so if you go to the next slide, this is just once again to show the results that we've been able to have. This is the savings at each, this is the average savings per account, so per household in these, in these communities based off of how long the programs have been in place. And we can provide the numerical breakdown of this as needed. This is just to give it an idea that residents, even the most recent program in Metford, their residents are saving on, the residents were saving fifty dollars by, by participating in the aggregation program, even just over the beginning of two thousand twenty, this first half of the year. And so while we, once again, we can't guarantee savings, our track records are that we, every one of the contracts that we have negotiated and we brought to bid for our clients have saved money over the life of the contract for all of their residents. And so we're very proud of that, and we continue to, we intend to keep that track record going. So we're getting to the last two, three slides here actually, or maybe four. So the first one is, we want to be sure that the experience of residents of this changeover into an aggregation program is seamless. So National Grid still handles their billing, still handles all the maintenances for power outages and any other concerns for electricity service. So none of that changes, and the billing doesn't change either. So the payments are still going through National Grid. There's just one section of the bill that changes, and that's who is supplying the electricity. This is an automatic enrollment program, so anybody who's on standard offer service is, would be rolled over into the program after it's been gone through the public hearing process, through, through the Public Utilities Commission, and through a multi-month education outreach program. Before it goes into effect, every individual has the opportunity to opt out, so that they don't have to participate in the program if they don't want to. If they begin participating and want to leave, they can. There's no penalty. There's no cost associated with it. All it takes is a phone call, email, website signup, postcards being sent back. We try to make every avenue of communication available to each one of the residents. And I know that, like, for every community that we've been working with, the question always comes up of why is this opt-out versus opt-in? Why do we make this, this change for people? And the first one is that that's what gives us the buying power to actually get lower rates than what National Grid has. And on the other side, it's that the, by doing it this way, we get to bring that local control to, they're opting out of a, of a program that was developed by the municipality rather than what's currently the place is, you're in a program that the state developed. So we like to bring, once again, that decision-making closer to the residents. So in the next one, just a quick snapshot of what it takes to develop an aggregation program. So the first piece is the, the resolution that's in front of you tonight that we worked with Rich Tulipski and the manager Rainier on. And this is a, this is a resolution just saying, we want to look at what a, what a program would look like. What would a plan look like? It's not solidifying it. It's not a contract. It's not solidifying it. It's not a contract to say we're going to do it. It's just to say, let's go build a let's go build a plan and see what it looks like. You would work with a usually you'd work with a consultant to develop that plan and begin soliciting public input on it. And that includes before any plan comes to the city council again or the town council. It would be published, published on usually the town website as well as published in the local newspaper. To make sure that folks know that this is out there and can weigh in on it. Going through that process, the final aggregation plan would have to be approved by the town council. And once again, it's an opportunity for you to both not just hear from the public input that's there, but also make amendments and changes to the plan. As you see fit. And once it's been, once it's been approved by the council, goes to the Public Utilities Commission. They review it to make sure it's consistent with state law and that everything is is good from their end. And then they approve the aggregation plan. They will also hold another public hearing in Portsmouth for the plan. Once a issue and order approving the aggregation plan, we'd be able to start going out to bid. For who would be the supplier of electricity, the default supplier for electricity in Portsmouth. This would involve communication with the council around what does indicative pricing look like? What expectations do we have with that savings would be? And eventually we go through the bidding process and the winning supplier would be chosen. At that point, we would run a multi-month education and opt out campaign to let folks know that this change is happening. They don't want to participate. They can happily just sign up right then and there or go to the website, sign up postcard. And there would be a full consumer notification letter that goes out, which identifies this is the price that you will pay for electricity. In the aggregation program, and this is the price that National Grid offers you as well, so that each person is able to make an informed choice. And then in those last, right before that last, that next meter read, after the plan's been approved, the education. And up education outreach program's been launched and concluded, the opt out period has ended. Then folks are enrolled in the program that follow the meter read. And once again, they can leave the program at any time after that. And so the last two slides is just about where other communities in Rhode Island are at with this. And so right now, Central Falls and Barrington have both approved aggregation plans, Central Falls in May, Barrington just earlier here in June. In Providence, we're working with their Department of Sustainability and in fact, when I get off this call, we'll be finishing some edits to their draft plan. So we can get out to a public hearing hopefully before the first week of July. In South Kingstown, their sustainability committee voted to approve their plan and now it's going before the South Kingstown Council. And I'm not sure, it hasn't been docketed yet, put on agenda, but in the next month and a half. And then Newport, who hasn't signed up as a client of ours at this point, but Newport has a hearing on Wednesday. Just like, not a hearing, but a council meeting on Wednesday, just like this one, where they're doing this first consideration of a resolution to build. To put together an aggregation plan. And then the very last slide here, there are, there's more slides that we sent along, which detail more of the education outreach work and examples of it. But hopefully that's been distributed to you and you can look through it. We can also answer questions about it. But this last piece, we want to say is that there's a benefit of working with other communities. Just like there's that purchasing power of aggregating every the residence electricity supply. By working together with other communities, we're also able to aggregate the supply of all the communities that are working together. So Providence has the greatest buying power because they're the largest city. And then any town that's working in the same buying group then also benefits from that buying power. So instead of it just being the. The residents of Portsmouth that we're do that we're taking out to bid, it's Portsmouth, it's Portsmouth, Barrington, South Kingstown, Central Falls and Providence altogether. Providence has made the, as far as choosing a consultant, Providence has made its RFP. As and all bid documents available to any Rhode Island communities to review, we've made our contract that we've signed with other communities. Available as well. And we've shared it with the manager or the town administrator last week. So it's available to be reviewed well in advance of a consultant being chosen. But and then the the sense of timing is that Providence is on track to approve their plan in July. And we're hoping to have these first plans go into effect early in twenty twenty one. So that gives us a five to six month bidding timeline or time period to work with. So that's the quick overview of it. And as Mr. Talibski mentioned, that the purpose of our presentation here was hopefully to have. The council review this, ask questions, and if you feel that an aggregation plan would be worthwhile here in Portsmouth. To authorize the the town staff to develop a plan to bring it back to you so you know what it would look like.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. That was a very good overview. I have a couple of questions. I don't know if anyone else has any questions if you want to ask, but I have just a couple. As we were going through this. Is there any initial cost to the town?
There is, no, there is no initial cost to the town. Just to delve into that, just give a snapshot of that, a consultant such as ourselves, we would not be paid directly by the town. We'd be paid, we'd be paid by the supplier that you chose. So there's no income or revenue for us to just work until the plan goes, the program is actually in operation. And then that's, we would be paid by them as the ones that were chosen by you. So there's no cost to the town. And our role within would be to do the research, the drafting and the regulatory piece of it and to make sure that the town is there to make. The decisions and then we'll be the workers for it.
Correct. What um what would be the overall timeframe from for implementation? And you went through the steps here, you know, went through me, what 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 is that timeframe?
So the fastest that it could happen would be once again on that same six month timeline that it is conceivable. With a little luck at the Public Utilities Commission in particular, they're the big unknown. That if you move forward tonight, that there is, the potential is there for us to have the program in operation in January. That being said, there's a number of unknowns because the Public Utilities Commission is unpredictable of how long it would take to approve a plan. And at the same time, that if we get to a point where we're going out to bid and the pricing does not look good, we will, we recommend to all of our clients to wait. So that would be the other piece of a potential delay, that if the market looks like you will not get beneficial pricing, we'd say, hold off. We can go out to bid in a month or two months from now when the pricing looks better.
Okay, because that leads into my next question then. What, based on your experiment, experience. What are, you know, these these timeframes? That are are general that you're seeing as as kind of the best time to enter into the to the market? Is it a, you know, is it a spring, fall, like what what are you?
Yeah.
Your experience value?
Our our experience is that it's best to, it's best to take us out to bid for suppliers in the fall to. In the fall to winter period. That's when the pricing is tends to be best for us as well as when national grids rates are the highest. And so we're able to compete against them much better.
I know we have some questions from. Folks, could I go to do a conference? Let's, who came up first?
I note that this is a presented as a competitive bid process that would select a supplier for all residents. People could opt out, but but they would have to actually take action to. They would automatically be enrolled, isn't it? If that's the right phrase. So my, I'm my concern is that somebody's going to. Bill from a company they've never heard of before. You know, that we're making choices for people here in town that they may be unaware of. Sure, you've encountered that question.
Absolutely, Councilman Katzman. And for the first piece, so the first part of that question of the bill that they would recognize. The billing is still all done through National Grid. So there's no change in the billing structure and there's no change in the billing experience for individual residents. Once again, because we don't want anyone to be surprised or be distrustful of what's going on. And in the other piece, as far as it being an opt out program. It's, I think I had mentioned this before, but. The purpose of that is because it gives us the that power, the there's two purposes of it. One, it gives us the power in the market to commit at a lower. Second reason is that that's the way the state statute is drafted. And so it makes it an opt out program. And then our goal through the education and outreach work is that we need to reach residents where they're at to explain what's happening. And this includes multiple mailings that we do, a full consumer notification letter. As well as an outreach program that applies to business organizations, community organizations. Providing as many presentations as possible, developing literature that can be distributed. So the residents know what that what is going on. And we work with our communities to make sure that's co-branded with the town. So it's not just like good energy is sending you a mailing that you're going to ignore. But the idea is that the town of Portsmouth is in fact the one that's evaluating this program. And you know that the communication is coming from the town, saying we're going to move to an aggregation program. Want you both to be informed of it and have an opportunity to weigh in on what it's going to look like. And as I said before, is that everybody, everybody right now is already being put into a plan without their choice or knowledge. It just happens to be the one that National Grid supplies. And we we appreciate that these programs allow it to be something that community chooses rather than what National Grid chooses.
I just had a question. Is there a critical mass of citizens in the town that have to agree to this in order for the program to work? And have you ever encountered a situation where a people opted out that the program couldn't be carried forward?
So to take the second question first, I have not, do not have experience of people opting out such that the program doesn't work. I can't say that it could never happen. I just had our experiences that it has not happened. And are the the data that we have, or at least the experience we have from the fifty plus communities that we've worked with. Is that upon enrollment, about eighty eighty to eighty five percent of eligible accounts stay in the program. And we get the opt out rate, it might be ten to fifteen percent. And then when we get to renewal periods or within a first year to the renewal periods, our our program participants are usually up to ninety to ninety three percent. Of the eligible accounts in a community. And that just speaks to the fact that the program works and that if your neighbor is saving money, you opted out of that program. They share it with you. The chances of coming back into the program get higher because for us, the cornerstone of this and the reason why it works is it saves people money. And that's the good number one goal overarching purpose in doing this. And that's where we have to be successful. And that's the reason why we're able to increase participation rates over the life of a contract.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So with this program, I'm glad you answered that where if people chose to opt out, they can still opt back in in a future time. And that's, is that just on the annual renewal each year or can they opt in at six months into the program?
They can opt in six months into the program. Either if they left the program, once it started, they can come back. And if they opted out to begin with, they can come back in at any time. It just takes one month to be in effect so that in the next meter. Read the next time, they can come back in.
And then how does this affect people who have signed up for North American Power Corp, Green Energy, blah, blah, blah? Or are they able to opt in as well or do they have to wait till the end of their contract with that supply?
So they are not automatically enrolled because they have already signed a contract with a competitive supplier and at all points where we honor that. If they break, if they leave that contract early, they can opt in. They can wait till their contract ends and then they can opt in. It all depends on obviously their choice and what the their cancellation, contract cancellation fees might be, but the program will be there and available to them. When their contract ends or before if they choose.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have some.
Yeah, Mr. Rhodes, about how much do people save in this aggregation program as a percentage of what they usually?
I am, I don't know if Patrick Roach is muted. He might have that data number on the top of his head quicker than I do. I know I have, I can pull some per account data. I don't have a percentage in front of me. I don't know, Patrick, do you have that available? He's there.
Well, it doesn't, if not a percentage, what is a typical saving for?
Okay. Yes, I can, I can, I can better answer that. So while, once again, every every program's a little bit different. And at the end of our presentation, there's actually a savings table. But we have had folks save anywhere from, you know, forty five dollars in that first six months to a hundred dollars in their first year. So it really depends because I can't tell you what National Grid's rate is going to be to know exactly what it's going to, what that rate's going to be. Or what that savings percentage is going, can then turn into. But yes, what we're seeing is right now, within the first months, each account was saving fifty to forty five dollars in Metford. And they just put their program into place in Bedford, Massachusetts. They're saving forty three dollars per account. So. That also goes up to our longest running program as a three hundred dollars per account. So it's, once again, a little bit different because it changes based off of what the utilities' basic service rate we're comparing to is.
And um, okay, my next question is, why are people opting out?
Yeah, I can make some broad generalizations, but I obviously. So the broad generalizations are really, there is a comfort of National Grid is the state utility. And we should just run with National Grid. And I don't want to change from what is currently offered, what was currently available. So there's that, there's that mentality. The other one is, as one of the counselors brought up before. If the town tells me I have to do it, I don't want to do it. And that's real. That's a position that many people, that people in every community work and take. And that's why we have the opt out provisions available. And those are the two primary reasons that people opt out. I guess actually the third one is that they already have a competitive supplier that they've signed with. And they've got a rate that they like with them or a service that they like. And so they stay opted out, they opt out in order to stay with that third party supplier.
Okay, also, did you say that there are costs to the residents? For opting out or opting in?
No, there's no cost to residents to. And that's one of the benefits of the consumer protection provisions we've put in together by having the town do the bidding of the program.
And are there other towns who are doing aggregation that are not using you in Rhode Island?
Yes, the town of, sorry, the town of North Providence has has is working with a different consultant.
And do you want to make your pitch as to why? We should go with you.
Sure. The best pitch that I have that I can, that I will give you is that by working with us, we'll be able to work. Our other communities and achieve even greater cost savings. By piggybacking with the buying power of Providence, Central Falls, South Kingstown and Barrington. So that's pitch one, is that I believe that we can achieve a lower rate by working multiple communities together. And the second one is, we are truly believe in making this as easy on town staff and administration. As possible to make this work. And so we have no fear about putting in the, like rolling up the sleeves. Doing the work of making sure this program is going to be functional for you and it's going to work for you without taking up a lot of staff time. We really want the both the council as a leadership, as well as the town administration to be able to make the key decisions. But then we're able to put the work in to make it happen. And so to that end, that's kind of our pitch, is that we're going to make it easy for you and we're also going to get you the lowest rates.
Is National Grid losing business because you're doing this and would they not want to fight? And for example, for artificially low prices to drive you out of this?
No, National Grid is by law prohibited from making any money on the supply of electricity. So to that end, they they in fact are looking to rename their service, Last Resort Service. As in, that's just the pro, the supply that's available on some national grid programs that don't go into the competitive market. We've been in conversation with them in Rhode Island for months now to make sure that we get these first programs approved. They've got their terms and conditions of available and vetted at the Public Utilities Commission to work with it. But we've also been working with National Grid in Massachusetts for the last ten years and they have not got to stop. The aggregation programs thus far.
Okay, just two other quick questions. One, are you being sued by any residents in Rhode Island?
No, I can state that we are not.
Okay. And then if, can you please tell us the effects residents with solar agreements with National Grid? What affects the aggregation would have on them?
Yes, so with National Grid, two different solar programs is Renewable Energy Growth Program. Where you get paid a certain amount for, you get paid a rate for the electricity that you generate. And then there's the net metering program where you get billed credit, the electricity that you generate. Both of those programs stay in place, as do all low income account rates that are currently in existence. All those programs stay in place. What this program will do is that for that net, for those, either for the net metering customers or for the ones that are on the Renewable Energy Growth Program and receiving direct payments, the rate at which they purchase electricity, when they don't generate enough, will be lower. They get the benefit of the aggregation rate, while all of the credits, credit programs still exist, as well as the higher rate that they sell their electricity at, that's program in stays the same. So they still get to sell at that higher level and then anything they purchase comes in at the lower aggregation level.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Oh, very good questions. Is it all right if I jump off now and then hit some of the resident, we've got some attendees, Mr. Katsman?
Just really quickly, I just want to be clear that the motion, if there is a motion, the resolution would authorize research and development of a plan engaging with potentially this contractor, all resulting in the present plan for appearing in final approval. Tonight, we aren't saying yes, we're saying yes, develop a plan. That accurate?
Yes, that is 100% accurate. This would be a resolution to, once again, develop the plan, do a public hearing on it, bring it back to the council before anything is, before you actually adopt it. And just to be clear, that the town has the opportunity to leave this program at any time up until you sign a contract with the electricity supplier. Yep.
All right, I think a few hands have dropped off. But I think we still have Michelle.
I've tried to unmute her.
Michelle, you're muted on your end. Michelle, can you hear us? Hands down, so maybe did we? There's no, maybe we've answered Michelle's question. Is there anything in chat or anything? No chat coming in?
Mr. President, while we wait for Michelle, can I ask another quick question?
Absolutely.
Jamie, just to confirm, National Grid makes their money off of the transmission services and all that fun stuff, not the actual cost of the kilowatt per hour that they charge, that just is passed on from what they get charged by XYZ Energy Production Company to the residents. You're looking to aggregate that cost, so the only savings people will see on the bill, what they're being charged for a kilowatt per hour?
Yes, that's correct. It's just for the supply services, it's not for the distribution that National Grid supplies.
Mr. President, this is Keith Hamilton. I would make a motion that we approve the resolution and move forward at looking for opportunities to save our residents' costs on electricity.
Mark Ryan, I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. I see no more questions from anybody else. So we have all those in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Patson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Grabiger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
All right, on to new business number three is a review. Review the Charter Review Committee report and propose revisions to the town charter. So we have in our backup, we had, we had some of the proposed charter review revisions. We also have members of the Charter Review Committee available for questions. I think what we need to be aware of as, as counselors, any, any motions on the charter revisions. If, if there's any action tonight, or if there's, if it's continued, we do have to make a decision at a meeting in July, no later than our July 27th meeting in order to get any proposed changes to the Secretary of State in order to have any changes on our ballot. So I just want everybody to, to keep that in mind as the discussions are ongoing. If counselors have additional charter proposals, that we cannot hear anything outside of what the Charter Review Committee has mentioned tonight. But if there are additional charter review questions, we could, we would have to take those up at, at our next council meeting in July in order to vote on those ahead of time and get it to the Secretary of State. So I just want to let, let everybody know that if there are additional, any additional comments or revisions to the charter, we would need, we cannot hear those tonight for notification of the Open Meetings Act. So we do need to, we would need to address any of that at a meeting in July. So I think in order to get started here, we have, everybody has the matrix. And we have several questions in, or in the matrix, we have several suggested changes, revisions to the charter. We go through them one at a time, have discussion, request if necessary, request clarification from members of the Charter Review Committee. And we can, we can go through that one at a time. I'm open to suggestions from counselors.
Mr. President?
If I may.
Hold on, I had multiple hands go up. I, I think Len is out, so is Andrew.
I, I think that now would be an okay time to ask Norin to present the committee's findings. If he's, if that's his plan.
We, okay, we have it, we have it in front of us, so we could go through it that way. I'm okay with that. Ms. Abbott, you got your hand up?
I do, I, I think there's a lot of big changes here that are pretty consequential. I know we got this document on June 8th. I personally feel a little underprepared to discuss them extensively and decide one way or another on them. And I, I do have additional comments that I would like to make and changes that I would like to propose to the charter. So I would actually like to make a motion that we table this for discussion and consideration at our next council meeting. And I know that that, we need to, that's do or die and we have to make a decision by then. But I would appreciate an extra time to actually think about these and really talk to others about it and consider the repercussions of each of these changes before we vote them, whether they should be on the ballot or not.
Andrew Kelly seconded.
Table, I don't think we should be putting ballot measures before the people until we, we should not do that lightly or quickly. And there's a lot here, I can swear with.
So let me just take a step back because some of it came in a little muffled. We, I think we, basically everything that Ms. Abbott said, Len, some of your, some of your comments got, got muffled out. We are going to go through them, we're going to hear from Rick Norton on each of the recommendations. But we will not make any decisions tonight. You're, you're asking to table it to our next meeting in July? Is that?
Correct.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second on that? Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Kelly seconded it.
Mr. Kelly seconded it.
Can, can we discuss that for a moment?
Absolutely.
Just that the motion to table this would stop discussion. And the presentation would no longer happen. And I believe there's a few things on there that I think that we can come to agreement on to at least allow the, the canvassing office and the Secretary of State to get a jump on some of these. Now, I'm, I'm looking, obviously I can't change the screen, but the first one up there is just how the, how the council candidates appear, which is a lot rather than in alphabetical order. Now, alphabetical order is great for Ms. Abbott, not so great for Dr. Ryan. But to me, I think there's a few things that we might be able to knock off, the changing of words and making things towards state law or appropriate to say law, I think we can knock some of those off. The, the heavier lifting ones that we can have a discussion with the Charter Review Commission Committee tonight, I think would be helpful in making decisions come July 27th, rather than waiting till July 27th to hear what their discussion is. So just tabling it at this point in time stops discussion.
That's fine, I think we can go ahead and have the discussion. I can, can I hold my motion till before we vote? Or tell me how, what, how, what motion do I need to make so that we can discuss?
Once a motion to table has been made and seconded, technically you're not supposed to have discussion at all and it's supposed to stop all discussion.
I withdraw my second.
I think Ms. Abbott withdraw her motion, we can all compare. There are innocuous and youthful items here. I think the first four motions on the list of motions, for example, are mostly cleaning up language. More substantive matters I wouldn't want to discuss, I mean, we can discuss them, but I would not want to take any action tonight. Include the.
Would it be?
Tabling those items.
Would it be more appropriate if I make a motion to table them one item at a time as we go through them?
No, I think we can go through the items and just tick a few off. I think we should hear from the committee first, if the committee wants to make a presentation.
I believe that was what Mr. Kelly was suggesting.
Or alternatively, if Counselor Abbott has specific items that she would like to table, maybe she can list the ones she wants tabled, and we can discuss the others.
Well, yeah, I think I would still like to hear from the committee first.
All right, I will withdraw my motion.
Thank you. I'm not saying I'm not going to vote for it later, I just, that motion, the way it's presented and by Robert's rules, it just stops everything.
How about if we, how about if we allow the, Mr. Norton to present his report? Then we can, we can go from there, like Mr. Kelly had a very good point. Let's hear from Mr. Norton and then we will decide how to, we can, we can go item by item as counselors. And if we want to table some, we'll table some. If there's some that we think we can agree upon tonight and vote on tonight, then, then that's, that's the, I'm okay with that.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, so not to put Mr. Norton on the spot, but we're going to put Mr. Norton on the spot.
We, we do have one question waiting for Mr. Doyle. Well, he has his hand up, I don't know if it's a question or a statement, sorry.
Okay, let's go to, I just scroll up, Mr. Doyle?
Yes, can you hear me?
We got you, yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes, I, I just, very briefly, I just want to speak in favor of the, adding a ballot question to allow nonpartisan candidates to run for, for office. I have a longtime employee of Naval Warfare Center. And I just want to say, I can't think of a better way to get people involved and interested in taking an active part in their local government. And the time is right. I'm, very briefly, I'll just say, I'm 49 years old. Over 20 years ago, I was involved in trying to get changes, you know, and changes in Massachusetts and that sort of thing. And the time is right in the nation and in the community, in the state of Rhode Island. And Portsmouth will look great if we get that ballot question on this November's ballot. So thank you, thank you for your time.
Is he on the panel? I see him.
I, I don't see, is Mr. Johnson even here?
Rick Norton?
Yeah.
There he is.
Good evening, President Edward Larr and town council members. For than a year, I have had the privilege to serve as the Chair of the Portsmouth Charter Review Committee. From the beginning, it was apparent that our membership, despite a commendable mix of backgrounds and experience, was bound by a deep affection for our town and a willingness to devote significant personal time and effort in order to perform an important civic duty. Our process was simple and deliberate. Starting at the beginning, every word, line, and article of the town charter was reviewed. Any recommended changes were discussed, at times debated and voted on. It was not uncommon for town leaders, employees, and experts to provide additional information, often at our request, to provide clarity or deeper background. Each of these individuals has the thanks and appreciation of the committee members. While we have generated a list of recommendations, which is before you, it's worth noting how much of the charter has remained unaltered. This, I believe, speaks highly to those who have worked on the document in the past. I hope our recommendations and the supporting matrix speak for themselves. We are ready to answer any questions you may have. Thanks are due to Mr. Rehner, who always ensured our request for information with respectful fashion, and Ms. Schultz, who helped prepare the matrix you have before you. Special thanks are due to each of the committee members, your interest and involvement were inspiring. I also need to thank Mr. Fred Morano, who was a superbly effective vice chair. However, I have reserved my deepest thanks for Mr. Mark Katsman, the committee secretary. Mark's contribution was absolutely essential to our success in fulfilling this task. And with that, Mr. President, members of the council, I await your questions.
Okay, so yeah, I guess the easiest way to go through this is if we, is if we look at the matrix, right? We've got, you know, it's very, it's very well put out in front of us. We've got the existing text and then the proposed changes. So for example, the very first one, which is under section 201, you know, the, the proposed changes would be the names of all candidates for town council who shall have qualified to appear on the ballot show, be listed along with their respective party designations. And in order determined by the board of canvassers by the drawing of lots, regardless of party designation or affiliation, we can clearly see that the proposed changes are highlighted in red. Any deletions are stricken is implicit purpose.
I, Mr. President?
Yes.
I believe that there's a, the canvassing note alludes to the fact, anyway, I'm not certain, that the drawing of lots, regardless of party designation or affiliation, is inconsistent with RIGL 1719-9.1. I'm sure Ms. Schultz can elaborate.
We have, we have Ms. Schultz in house.
So I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, I was walking down the hall.
Okay, hold on one second. So, so Hannah, what, Michelle, could you just repeat your question?
So, so I'm reading your canvassing note about RIGL 17.
Yes, sir.
Point nine, oh, 1719-9.1. As inconsistent with the newly added, regardless of party designation or affiliation.
Right, in a partisan race, the Secretary of State holds. the Secretary of State holds a lottery. And in that lottery, they determine the order of the parties. For example, if we have a moderate party, it would, it would come Democrat, Republican, moderate, and then independents. Independents always appear after the parties partisan candidates. And then what happens is we alternate according to that formula. Whatever is the result of that lottery is what we do in accordance. And for the canvassing office, we do do a lottery. What happens is we put every candidate's name and hat regardless of party. And we draw a matrix of what the ballot will look like. For example, we'll say Democrat, Republican, Democrat, Republican, and then independent. And then we choose the candidate, and we plug in the name in accordance to, to that formula. And that is how it's conducted, even though our charter does allow for alphabetizing. And I can understand why that change would need to be made, but we in the Board of Canvassers understand how you appear on the ballot does make a difference. And that's why we conduct lotteries.
Yeah, I just think that Mr. Kelly's drawing, it does look as though the language in the charter change conflicts with the Rhode Island general law. The Rhode Island general law does impose an order based on the candidate's party, whereas our charter change says "party shall have no effect whatsoever on the order of candidates as they appear on the ballot."
Yeah.
Seven Republicans and then seven Democrats. Highly unlikely.
I'm sorry, you didn't hear that?
It would seem like the charter change would allow there to be multiple of one party in a row. That last statement, regardless of party designation or affiliation.
I couldn't do that. I have to go
Yeah, I think Kelly's just pointing out the fact that the language in the charter and in the state laws seem to conflict, it seemed to conflict, conflict, sorry.
So if I, if I pay existing language such as putting things in and out of the water is already superseded by state law?
Yes.
In terms of, so here's where I, I think we may be running into an open meetings law issue if we try to discuss this in more depth is our heads are somewhat tied. We cannot decide how we want to do things as any different than state law. So if we want to clean up our charter so that we remove language, you know, striking in alphabetical order is perfectly fine because we don't do, can't do that anyway. We will always be governed by state law. That said, I mean, including the words along with their respective party designations rather than our existing under their response, party designations is probably makes sense because that's how it is all. The designations aren't under, they're alongside. So I'd be in favor of having this re-craft to reflect state law, but beyond that, I I'm not knowing what the intent might have been initially. I don't think we should adopt this as presented with the, you know, the added language and the stuff like it is presented because it conflicts with state law.
Yeah, Ms. Schultz, I mean, given the, you know, the purpose as stated, it's mainly to be trying to remove bias against independent candidates. So in the current order imposed by the state, how is that done? You know, Republican, Democrat, Independent, or Independent, Democrat, Republican, or independents even enter into that sort of alternating system? How does that work?
The independents appear at the bottom of the ballot. And they too are part of the lottery. So their names will appear. I choose them, but they're going to appear on the ballot after the partisan candidates.
It's not very fair.
Well, in some sense, I understand that, but it's also they're guaranteed a placement on the ballot and don't have to go through a primary process that many of the partisan candidates have to go through.
Can I get clarification on that? If there were seven independent candidates, there wouldn't be a primary? Actually, eight, eight independent candidates?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay.
But independent candidates appear on the ballot.
There's no primary.
If they, if they have qualified and obtained the necessary signatures and meet all of the requirements, they appear on the ballot.
So this is
I'd like to hold for further discussion this item.
I'll, I'll second that with the caveat that we asked the Secretary of State to weigh in on how to word it. I mean, that's the only thing we can
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think it seems to be all okay except for rewording regardless of party designation affiliation.
Okay, hold on. We hold those thoughts. We have a couple of, we have a couple of comments. Okay, let's go to, we have one on the phone. I just have a phone number. Could you please give us your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Dior Pies. I am connected to the Doom Audio 2 dot other, did they feedback? Do you have any sound that you could make?
So, so, okay.
Okay, as long as you can hear me loud and clear. So I just wanted to not be too premature with section 201 because section 201, the Charter Review Committee on February 27th approved a different version of section 201 by a motion of 7 to 6, which had the question of nonpartisan election. And then on June 4th, that motion was there was a motion to reconsider, and then the Charter Review Committee voted 9 to 8 to change it or revert it to an earlier version. So I don't want to gloss over what we're looking at here with section 201 because there is an alternative version of this section that allows for nonpartisan election. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because on June 11th, 2018, the town council, a majority, the current town council today made a motion to defer the question of nonpartisan election to the 2019 Charter Review Committee. And that motion was made by Dr. Vian, seconded by Linda Yudafusha, and also Kevin Agor and Mr. Hamilton were part of the majority of that motion. So I believe that the precedent and place by the town council to accept the recommendation to the Charter Review Committee when it comes to nonpartisan election. And that brings me to the second part of this, is that when you talk about conflict of interest, there clearly, we start to get into some gray water with conflict of interest because the charter is still states when it comes to conflict of interest. You cannot use your elected position to personally benefit yourself and to indirectly increase your chances of reelection. It's a gray area when it comes to conflict of interest. So the best answer, my recommendation, is to add the nonpartisan language that was approved by the Charter Review Committee on February 27th before formally considering what we do with section 201. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Pies. I mean, we can only, at this point, we can only go by what is in front of us from the Charter Review Committee. I mean, we have a report from them and a matrix from them, so I'm, I'm not I'm not sure how we can turn turn to a different, a different scenario here. This is, this is what is in front of us. I would agree that we have comments about, you know, checking with the Secretary of State for, for the proper language. And so I, I mean, this one at a minimum is going to be deferred to our next meeting to address it, but I don't think we can differentiate from what is presented at tonight on our discussion. We have to be taking into consideration what's in front of us here that was provided in our backup.
If I could, if I could rephrase that more succinctly, Mr. President. The public is entitled to notice of what we will discuss. The only thing presented on our agenda and backup were, were these motions passed. So for us to entertain items that aren't on these lists of motions is a violation of the open meeting law.
I guess that was more succinct.
I had the benefit, I had the benefit of your setting it all out first.
Thank you, Mr. Kethman. All right, so
I just want the public to be clear on why, why we can't, can't do that.
All right, no, I appreciate it. I'm kidding aside, thank you. So at least for for item number one here, second question 201. We have a motion to table this one or continue this one at our next meeting.
Yeah.
So moved.
There's already a motion in a second. Linda made a motion, I seconded it.
Fantastic. Oh, that's right, you did.
All right. But before we go to, we, there were two more hands up from, I think.
Mr. Kethman.
Yeah, Mr. Keth.
Yeah, the Mr. Kethman.
Yeah, the Mr. Kethman. Okay, let's go to that. Nope. Hello, Mr. Kethman?
Hello, can you hear me?
We got you.
Good. I just want to say that, you know, as Secretary, I kept accurate records of attendance. And I think you should know that the, the council will consider its own judgments on whether or not, you know, to make any changes with regards to party affiliations and elected positions. And that that was probably our most controversial subject in terms of generating discussion. But I also want you to know that we struggled to get a quorum at a lot of our meetings. And when these decisions were made, one way or another, it was usually by one vote prevailing one way or the other. So I don't think you can say that for any of these more controversial issues that there was any kind of mandate from the committee of overwhelming support. It really was very split. And so I just want you to I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kethman. Okay. So we, so we had a motion in a second to continue this item. Item 201, all in favor? Oh, Mr. Norton, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. This in many ways is a unique recommendation from the committee. And that we were fully aware of RIGL 17.999- with a point one. We also were aware that the council will using its, its, its powers to make determinations regarding altering, accepting, or denying our motion. But I think the important thing about this motion, it reflected a sense in the committee that the current system is unfair. That there is a bias against independents. And if there's an alphabetical issue, it is an increase to a chance that. So adapting the language to the law is fine. But the council is not without power in regards to pushing or to representing its position to our elected officials, et cetera. And there is a sense, I thought, the committee that whatever system you use, we use to elect our officials should be fair. And the current one, quite simply, and you heard, everybody kind of agree, it is not fair to independents, nor is it fair to the, we'll talk about that later, the people can't get on the ballot at all. But that's the main sense, I would say that was the main sense of the committee. I'm sure the council will make the appropriate adjustments as they see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Okay. So we have a motion in a second to continue item 201. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Captain?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Agar?
Aye. Motion passes 7 to 0. Okay, I'm gonna move on to section 202. And I apologize, I did not read the purpose under 201. The purpose under 202, eliminate potential conflicts of interest in certain cases, but allow others currently forbidden from running in their current conflict of interest in their position, for example, the National Guard. So you can see under section 202, it appears there was really clarifications here that were inserted. The underlying text and, and it's read on my printout here. You, you can see what the proposed changes are. We have questions from the counselors on section 202? Mr. Kethman? Got to unmute.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I see the proposed language, it appears to have two elements in it. One element is directed to forbidding someone serving on the Port of Water and Fire District from also serving as a member of the town council. Right? The other element has to do with language saying that current service as employed by a federal government agency or contractor, et cetera, shall not prevent you from running. That second language relating to the federal government agency, the language is fine. It may or may not be applicable to any particular federal government agency employee, employee, depending on, you know, whether the laws allow them to run. But our charter can certainly note that that's not a bar, a buffet. Regarding the Water and Fire District, two things. One, I'd rather just say Portsmouth Water and Fire District. Because what other quasi municipal corporation is there in town? And if this was drafted, address that, that they should say that. But in any event, I would be opposed to it. I, just speaking from my own personal experience. I have run for office many times. I've lost elections more often than I have won elections. And every time, I respect the vote of the voters. And if someone is a member of the Water Board and the School Committee, that's for the voters to decide. I don't think our charter should say you're barred from one office or another. I don't personally, I don't see there's any conflict of interest from service on the Water and Fire District and service on a town council or school. If there ever does arise a particular question before either body, the person with the conflict might have to accuse themselves, but short of that, which, by the way, has never happened because there's no conflicts. So I'm opposed to barring school committee members and town council members from also serving on the Port of Water and Fire District, because that should be a question up to the voters and not on our charter to, to issue edicts on who's eligible or not. So I would, I would make a motion to, to approve the change as to federal government agency employments by a contractor supporting a federal agency or department, that additional language. And not incorporate any of the other language relating to less than municipal organizations.
Mr. Kethman?
I would just like to say that that to leave the language about employment by a federal government agency in place if, only seems permissible if we go nonpartisan. Otherwise, it becomes a violation of the Hatch Act to have that language in there. And it just seems like, even though you're saying that for law supersede the municipal law, that we should not have language in our charter that specifically violates existing federal law. So I would be in support at the moment.
If I made Ms. Jufusa, then I would have been like, since she doesn't have a second yet, I can change it to reject all of this language and make a motion to section 202.
I'm not sure of anybody else. I don't think we heard you.
I'm sorry, I'll speak louder and into my microphone, since there wasn't a second yet. Was there?
No.
No.
I'm happy to admit, I agree with I'm happy to admit, I agree with this, because I was thinking that the language relating to federal government agencies would be innocuous in the sense that it would be inoperable if it was barred by federal law. But I agree that it raises confusion. And it's not necessary to name it. So I would change my motion to reject the proposed language to section 202.
Reject your revisions or?
Yep. Reject the, reject the charter.
Okay.
Committee's proposed amendments, largely because I believe anybody who wants to run for water board and town council or serve on both of those bodies should be free to do so, and it should be up to the voters of Portsmouth to decide whether they like that or not by voting that person or not.
All right. So we have a motion. We, we have a, I know we have some hands up, but do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? Let's go to Ms. Norton.
Thank you again. Remember, the committee was charged to adapt the charter as we thought fit. Looking 10 years into the future, recognize that organizations that exist today may not exist in years from now, and that others that don't exist today may, which may explain the, I think explains the less than precise language that Mr. Castman was pointing out. It's clearly Mr. Castman's opinion is that this is not an issue. It was the opinion of the majority of committee members voting that day that there were potential conflicts. And as for the larger language regarding service on the Hatch Act, it was the committee's understanding that the Hatch Act may indeed exclude individuals in a partisan election. But the fact that you work for a federal government agency does not a priori prevent you from running. It would have to be, have to be a look at what you did for that agency, what authorities you held in order to determine whether or not that you were in that, in that category of excluded personnel. And of course, the council will decide as the council sees it.
Okay. Just checking to see.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
I would disagree with striking this. I believe there's a, there are inherent conflicts with serving on the water board. The other quasi state municipal corporation that comes into mind would be the Rhode Island Bridge and Turnpike Authority, which monitors two bridges that come on to into Portsmouth. If somebody served on the board of that and was effective in, I don't know, putting tolls on them, it would be a conflict of interest, I would believe. I think we charged committee, and they worked 12 long months to put these together. I think that we should look at our residents to be able to vote for most of these, unless they're direct violations of state law. I don't believe this is a direct violation of state law. And I believe that having the authority to change what the town is being charged and the residents are being charged, and also the taxes at the water department level and the town level, is a conflict. And I think that we should try and separate those out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Captain?
All committees formed by the council are advisory in nature. We, as a town council, this one that I've been sitting on and all councils before it, have never simply done whatever a committee does to do. We, the council, are responsible to the voters of Portsmouth. We are the only seven people responsible to the voters of Portsmouth. We are charged with being advised by our diligent efforts undertaken by the committees we form. And clearly, a lot of work has gone into this. But Councilmember Hamilton knows that we do not simply adopt whatever is presented to us, whether it be by the Charter Review Committee, by the Solid Base Committee, by any committee. It is advisory in nature. And to suggest that an argument in favor of adopting anything is, well, that, that's what we've been advised, and we shouldn't argue against that, that's not really a valid argument. I don't accept that arguing for or against adoption of any of the provisions in this report is in any way favorable to or negative against the people who worked hard to put this together. They knew it was advisory when we appointed them. We know it's advisory now to suggest otherwise it's not a straight face argument.
I think it makes sense, though, Mr. Castman. I believe I might, I think I'm going to withdraw my second because there are substantive issues here, which probably could be put off till the next meeting so that we could research them a bit better. I mean, I have to admit, I don't know every, I thought that the quasi municipal corporations referred to was only the water board, but I want to know that for sure. And as far as the other language about federal government agency employment, feels like we should hold that off as well, because we will be deciding things in the upcoming meeting that would affect that. So I'll withdraw my second.
Fair enough. So since my motion is, no, second, let me just close by saying the language, the unchanged language, not part of what the Charter Review Committee has presented to us, but the unchanged language says council members shall be qualified electors and shall hold no other employment in the service of the state. That's been overruled by state law. So there's language in here that, that, it's overruled by state law for a number of reasons, including that these kinds of picking and choosing who can be able to serve based on other types of else has on occasion been unconstitutional. So I'm certainly happy to not act on this until we refer it to our next meeting.
Yeah, and I would just also add that usually you could make a reference to existing state and federal laws and just say that, you know, anything that the charter says should be in compliance with it. I know that's not necessary, but that would eliminate, change it every time, like, for example, the state, the reference to the state in 202 right now is wrong. And we're not changing it right now. But if it wasn't in there, and we just said we're going to follow state and federal law, we wouldn't have to change it. It would be in compliance. So another reason to think about doing this slightly differently. But so I would make a motion that we tape, table, is that the correct?
Yeah.
To section, to next meeting and discuss further.
It will be continued to our next meeting.
Continued to our next meeting. That's the motion.
Okay.
Andrew Billy.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Hamilton, second?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Captain?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, let's, let's move on to section 204. It's, the purpose was to clarify and clarify the chain of command on the town council. So you will see under the proposed revision under section 204, the change would be read there in case of the absence of the town council president. The vice president shall be the presiding officer.
Move to approve this measure.
And forward to the voters.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion in a second.
In the second, please.
If I, if I just have a quick.
Ms. Abbott.
Thank you. Yeah. Mr. Captain?
So I support the measure. I just want to point out that the council has adapt, adopted, not by a charter, but by a special rules order regarding the selection of the vice president and to preside in the absence of the president, so that I wouldn't get the idea that we've been acting out any support for having a vice president.
Okay.
There are no Alexander Hags on this council, I don't think.
Or Aaron Burr's.
So we have a motion in a second to approve this recommendation to the ballot. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Captain?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Passes seven to zero. I just want, there's no, no. Let's move on to section 207. Purpose to ensure all members appointed to standing in temporary committees have followed the procedures, also to ensure that the town will keep planning spelling out a line of succession and authority. Prior to the COVID thing. So you can see under section 207, the suggested changes there are highlighted. That's an awful red, but it is a red. The highlighted change there. Do you have any comments, questions from council?
It seems that this just clarifies something we've already done.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah. Mr. President, I support the motion, I support the provision. I do again want to point out that among the powers listed in 207 is the power to create other departments and so on. So that aren't named. So to have a, an emergency management director to approve an emergency management plan, it doesn't say that in the charter, but we do, the council has the authority to do these sorts of things through sort of purpose language.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second.
Not yet.
I thought we had a motion.
No.
I will make a motion to approve the changes as presented and send them to the voters for section 207.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Castman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan? Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Aye.
Onto the section 208. Purpose to ensure electronic access to provisional budget in addition to other, other forms, the greater length of availability was designed to allow those interested to become more familiar with the content of the entire budget. So under, under section 208 of the budget, in paragraph two, we can see that the budget is published to the town website as well as in the newspaper. Under section three, provisional budget was extended from five days to 10 business days prior to the public hearing.
Mr. President, when cats, I propose, I move to adopt these changes, provided that I get some confirmation that 10 business days it doesn't present some particular problem for those who are doing the budget.
I think we just worked.
I'll second that.
Comment on that for discussion. Depending on how the budget process goes, it could fall in the Memorial Day timeline. And business days may not allow you to get that done. If the final meeting of the council is the day after Memorial Day, and the budget hearings on the sixth or seventh, the 10 business days might be tight.
It would require us to. It's going to be back then, yeah, and we would have to move this. It would schedule. It would require advanced planning on that budget scheduling process. When we agree to that back, you know, in, when is it, November? When we look at the budget schedule, so we'll, we'll have to make sure we, we vetted those scheduled days.
So perhaps, perhaps, Mr. President, we could do this. Let me amend my motion if Mr. Hamilton will, he seconded it.
Ms. Abbott.
Allow me to amend it to simply the language on item number two regarding publishing on the town's website. And let's defer item number three to our next meeting when we can get some more information, confirmation.
Okay. So.
So my motion is to adopt the language proposed paragraph number 208, too.
For number three until our next meeting in July.
Correct.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Castman? Mr. Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passed, passed with seven to zero. Moving on, we've got item, section 209. Purpose to more accurately reflect the electoral preference filing town council vacancies. Philly town council vacancies, alright. Vacancies under section 209. The changes identified there in red. Questions? Comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Captain?
Thank you, Mr. President. I greatly appreciate the, the Charter Review Committee members in trying to address orderly succession and appointment process. But I disagree with the characterization of the purpose being to accurately reflect the electorate's preference in filling town council vacancies. And here's what I mean by that. If the person coming in number eight, in other words, the, the next highest vote getter, person coming in number eight, lost getting into that seventh slot by one vote, that means one thing. If they lost by 500 votes, that means something entirely different and certainly may not reflect the electorate's preference. It could mean, could reflect the electorate's rejection. So to simply say next highest vote getter, it does not necessarily reflect what the voters want. Voters may have made a very strong decision to not vote for that eighth person, depending on the gap. It can also set up bad dynamics if the next highest vote getter has the ability to step up to this merely by harassing somebody until they resign. We have seen in Turin where next highest vote getters have launched a recall campaign. They got people voted, voted off, and then they got themselves appointed. Now Portsmouth does not have a recall, but I still believe that this would establish inappropriate, potentially inappropriate motivations. So I'm not in favor of adopting this measure. If you'd like, I can, that as a motion.
Okay. Mr. Captain? Or no?
If that's a motion to reject it, I second it.
Motion to reject it, then?
We, we have a motion and a second. We have, we have a hand up. Mr. Baker? Hello? Mr. Baker, can you hear us? Is that muted? Mr. Baker? Mr. Baker, you're, you're unmuted on our end. Don't, oh, you're. Is there a way to include?
Try again.
You gone? I can't see. The hand is still up on, on the screen.
I can put the hand, and he had trouble getting into a meeting before.
Maybe we can type his question into Q and A.
Mr. Baker, are you able to type your question under the Q and A?
Well, Mr. President, while he, he tries that or tries to get back on, I personally am in, in favor, and I don't know if I want to put it. I don't know if the word appoint is the right word, but I think the spirit of what the committee, the committee was trying to get forth is correct. We've had instances in the past where people have won an election and been gone in three months because they moved out of town or in one case, I think out of the country. Personally, I think this should apply both to the school committee and the town council. The people who have taken up the the honor of running for council or school committee deserve to be the first people considered to fill vacancies if they do happen to occur. I've stated it last time and I'll state it now that, you know, what happened with the school committee last year, I thought, two years ago, I thought was a travesty and that the people who actually ran for the position or the person that ran for the position and also members who applied, who have children in the schools were rejected over two other candidates. So I think there should see some level of the charter that allows for taking politics out of the Portsmouth Town Council and School Committee. And Mr. Baker has typed in his letter.
All right, so let me, let me read Mr. Baker's comment. As I understand the charter, the council can appoint anybody to the council regardless of whether they, they actually ran for office. The council could also appoint somebody who finished fifteenth in the election. The person finishing eighth did get approval from more voters.
As I stated, the council could and has appointed some, appointed persons who didn't even run for the office. So I, I think this takes that out of it by only to people who actually put in the blood, sweat and tears of running for council or school committee and get stepped over on in politics.
So if I may, Mr. President?
Yes.
I appreciate that there are, Mr. Hamilton and I have a valid disagreements of philosophies and opinions on this. I see a dramatic difference between close losers and, and large voter block losers. I also believe that those who won election to a council have, should have the authority to preserve a cohesive body. It's not a Democrat or Republican thing because, well, the Democratic controlled and Republican controlled councils have been all over the map about this in, in, yes, selecting the next vote getter or no, not selecting the next vote getter. And so those are the decisions of those people who sit on the council and I will again go back to the fact that the twarfs are very responsible to and answer to the voters every two years. So.
Not the case of the school committee. That could be every four.
Well, this is, this is one section at a time, this is two oh nine, so there you go, for you.
Again, I think this is a, as a council, if we go forward and reject this, I think this is a question better served to the voters and not the seven of us. Because again, one of us could end up being number eight or fifteen as the, as Mr. Baker said. And as Mr. Pike said earlier, we're somewhat in a conflict of interest. It's not fiduciary, so I mean, I guess it is fiduciary since when we get paid a whole 20 bucks a week. But I, I would be in favor of approving this and sending it to the voters.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Do we have any questions, comments, further questions or comments from councils? So we have a motion and a second to basically deny the change.
Not adopt.
Not adopt the proposed change. Okay, all those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Rader?
Aye. The, the motion passes six to one. Not adopt the change. We're going to move on to number, item, section six oh two. The purpose is to ensure the fire chief has significant technical as well as leadership and administrative experience in the science. So under section.
I'd like to defer this one until our next meeting in order to get some input from the, the fire chief and the town administrator.
Second.
Good.
So we have a motion and a second from Linda. Linda was the second to defer this item until our next meeting. All those in favor? Sorry, I have a hand up from Park Katzen.
Greetings, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I just want to say that we actually, the Charter Review Committee did invite the fire chief to one of our meetings and it was actually upon his recommendation that we increase the amount of years' experience. So I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you, Mr. Katzen. That answers the question then, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so then.
Should I change the motion?
So if, if the fire chief is supportive of the measure, and we already know that, I don't need to defer it unless somebody else wants to gather further information.
Okay, so then we have a motion to adopt.
To approve the method change in the charter and send.
No, no, first we have to have a withdrawal of the original motion.
True.
I, I would like to know if the town administrator has thoughts on this question.
I fully support, I talked to the chief previously about this and I know that he is converted with the Charter Review Committee, so this makes sense.
With the, with the consent of the council, then I would withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Ms. Katzen.
A motion to approve the changes in Charter two and send to the voters or place on a ballot, whichever way you want to say it.
Have a second?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to section six oh five, Parks and Recreation here, to improve organizational structure. So it looks like the change is, it says the department shall be headed by a manager who shall be appointed by the town administrator with approval. I actually had a question on this one. I mean, is this, this is really for the Charter Review Committee here, but are we just renaming the director manager or are we looking to create another position within our parks and parks?
Clarifying. No, it says clarifying titles, so trying to make the distinction between departments and managers. Or our rec, would our rec department be run by the, mainly be run by the manager? Right now we do. I, I think just because in the past it was called the director of Parks and Recreation. But it really doesn't have any definition. So we're going to, just going to define that position as being a manager because being designated as a department has, department has very significant responsibilities and evolves with regard to hiring fire.
So I guess my, this is just to address this issue here of changing of the title. The other issue is not part of this, so we will stick to this. Do we have, actually, I see Mr. Norton has a question, has his hand up, so maybe it's clarification. Mr. Norton?
Not a question, just a clarification. Mr. Rainer has already described to you what he described to us and we felt there was a difference between director and manager and that the job described would be more appropriately handled by a manager. And I think I could do no better job than Mr. Rainer has just done explaining why in terms of this will improve organizational structure. Now, I'll leave it at that unless you have further questions.
No, no, that's, that's perfect and I, I fully understand the clarification. Do we have any comments? Ms. Abbott?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, what other departments do we have in town that have managers versus directors?
This is an ongoing effort, we want to clarify this, so one instance would be camisine. And I, I'm getting tired, I'm sorry, I said. Which were, we have, what else? We have building official, we have a solidest director.
Coordinator.
Coordinator. Coordinator. So we do have some different titles, okay. Okay.
Are you changing the, like, the, the job description of Parks and Recreation Director? Because last time I saw it was like three pages long and had a lot of, a lot of stuff on it.
This is strictly changing the, the rec department will be headed by the manager appointed by the town administrator. Just renaming director.
Honestly, I think I'd like to table this one too, to do some more research and I, I guess I don't know enough about the job description versus other job descriptions and most town departments that I'm aware of have directors. So you're saying that we would have a manager in lieu of a director and not a director? But I, I guess I just don't feel like I have enough, that I know, personally know enough about the, the difference to, to vote on this right now. So I'd rather table it for our next, till our next meeting. My second.
There's no other comments, questions? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to section seven oh one, dealing with the school committee. Purpose, these changes would remove the biases associated with party identification, particularly the negative effects on independent candidates and to allow a larger, although admittedly not greater number pool of candidates to participate who are currently prohibited, mostly due to the Hatch Act. So you can see the proposed changes there or it really additions to the current language in the charter. Comments, questions from councils?
President, I prefer that we address the issue of partisan elections versus nonpartisan elections as a whole, town council and school committee. What we just announced tonight in whole, I would, I would like to move this one to our next meeting, which we will address it. So we'll table till July, the July 13 meeting.
Second for discussion, or Ms. Abbott, okay. Did you just, you broke up a little bit there, but I think what you said was you want to have the school committee have a discussion with us on this?
No, that's not what I said, but I would welcome that. I certainly don't, so there's a number of factors here. All I said is I would want to discuss school, nonpartisan elections as a whole, town council and school committee.
Okay, okay.
And tonight we can't talk about town council because of the open meeting.
Fair enough. When you broke up, I thought it just sounded like you wanted to have the school committee on our next council meeting to discuss this, so.
No, but welcome input from the school committee. I, I don't like the idea of us changing their body without their input.
So just to clarify, the motion is to table this whole section till our next meeting?
Yes.
I give the second. Who, who seconded?
Linda.
Ms. Abbott.
The other female voice on the line.
Well.
We need you to say who you are when you do your motions so that.
I know, it's just so awkward to do that.
On our side, it's like jeopardizing which yellow box. It's, it's tough, but it's.
Mr. President, can I, can I make a request or a question to Mr. Katzen? Or is your motion to, are you going to a request to expand this or is your motion enough to expand this to a full discussion of both school and town?
My motion is just to move this item to July 13. If somebody else wants to make a motion to, I, I don't know that a motion to put nonpartisan elections for the town council has been forwarded and I don't think we can, but if somebody wants to put that on the July 13 agenda.
July 27.
Excuse me, you're correct.
Yeah, okay. Just want to clarify that, so if somebody wants to put nonpartisan town council elections on, we have to put it on separate. It's not part of your motion, okay?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so we have, we do have a motion and a second to continue this to our. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, let's move on to section seven oh four. Compensation to, to remove any confusion as to whether or not this stipend provided to school committee members should be considered salary. These elected officials are not salary employees of the town. So under section seven oh four, it looks like they're just renaming salaries compensation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we send to the voters for consideration the changes to seven oh four, seven oh six, and seven oh eight collectively.
Could you say that one more time, Mr.?
I'd like to approve and send to the voters the recommended changes to seven oh four, seven oh six, and seven oh eight collectively.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't see any hand up. Women, we do? Hold on before we, we have a hand up from Ms. Copeland. Hello?
Emily Copeland, Chair of the School Committee. I'd just like to comment that the school committee, myself and then Superintendent Riley had the opportunity to present our recommendations to the Charter Review Committee and we specifically requested the change in seven oh six. And I think seven oh eight is also fine.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Okay, so we, we do have a motion and a second for those three sections. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven. Motion passes seven to zero. This is going now. Under section 710. This chair's school committee is in accordance with state law. There are some suggested changes, really striking of some language. We have any comments from councilors?
I disagree with the hastily way that you passed the General Assembly. And I'll be voting to the voters.
And Mr. Kelly, we did not hear you.
I object to the rapid pace and lack of cohesion on the way the General Assembly passed these laws in the last session. I, and so I'll be voting against this, going to the voters for ratification.
President, could we have some clarification from the head of our school committee?
Yeah, I just saw a hand up from Ms. Copeland.
Hi, good evening. Yes, I appreciate Counselor Kelly's comments, but we didn't want the charter to be in violation of state law. And state law removed the school committee's power to approve the appointment of the employees. That now rests with the superintendent. We do have the power to approve principals and administrators.
Okay. I broke up a little bit, but I
Basically, let me just repeat, this is so that we, that our charter is in accordance with state law. This wording is given to us by our lawyer.
Okay.
I have a question, Ms. Copeland. If the state law changes, wouldn't we then be restricting our school committee unnecessarily? Why don't we just say that we want to comply with whatever the state law is about appointment and removal?
You could, you could easily add that wording as well. I think it says there provided by the laws of the state. So I mean, something that just brings us into compliance with state law would be good. It's just that as it stands now, we, we don't have the power to we don't have to give a formal approval to the appointments. Say like a seventh grade math teacher.
Right. So your recommendation is what's contained in the current 710?
Provision.
Provision.
Correct, though I understand Counselor Kelly's comments.
Then I will endorse what our school committee chair has recommended and move that we place, that we approve the changes to section 710 and that they be placed on the ballot for approval by the public.
Keith Hamilton, second.
Keith, you can have it.
It's 9:49.
In a second, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujafusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hey.
Mr. Ryan, Dr. Ryan, sorry?
Whoever I am, hi.
Ms. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes six to one. Onto section 902 of the records. Purpose, the recommended wording is believed to provide greater clarity. The recommended wording was really deletions, I believe, right? So any comments, questions from councilors?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I was skipping ahead. Number are we on? 902?
Yes. Yeah, it's really a striking of words. It was, it was just deletions.
I believe that we are I don't believe that the town council has the power under the Access to Public Records Act to do what the struck language says we could do, which is in our opinion decide it does something, so we're not releasing a document. I don't think we have that power. We have to comply with the APRA in its terms. So I would move to adopt the proposed deletion of that text as being consistent with state law.
Ms. Ujafusa, second. I think, yeah.
We have a comment?
Yes.
Baker? Mr. Baker? Are you able to hear us? If not, is he going to the question? Okay, section 902, Mr. Baker has typed in a question. Section 902 gives council overly broad and vague power to keep government records private. This section that allows those records, those records and documents for dislocutor of which, in the opinion of the council, would tend to defeat lawful purpose which they are intended to accomplish. And quote, Rhode Island law 30 38-2-2 provides for extensive exceptions to the release of public records. -29, exceptions to be precise, given the council, giving the council the ability to exempt any records it seems fit to keep private. To broad, for instance, the council majority would vote to keep a record slash document private if we're politically embarrassing. Not that this council would ever do that. And it would take quite some time to appeal that decision. State law already provides ample protection for the inappropriate government documents.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I thank Mr. Baker for his comment. I agree with him completely, and that's why I made the motion to, to accept the proposal to strike that language and put it before the voters.
We have a motion? Ms. Ujafusa, will you give a second?
Yeah, I can be the second. As well.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions?
Yeah, I it just doesn't read right when you just strike it to me. I don't know, it could just be me. And it could be the fact that it's 10 o'clock at night, but. Both valid points. It just seems like accept such records as required by laws of the state and council. It just doesn't seem to flow. I think that needs to be reworded somehow to make it more correct English.
So why don't we defer this until July? I think, I think the words need to be struck, but I agree with you, Mr. Hamilton.
It just needs to be wordsmithed a little bit better, that's. Yeah, it is a little confusing to me.
So is that a motion to table?
It's not, because somebody already made a motion to approve, so.
Make a motion to table, the motion to approve.
I think we should table this and ask our solicitor just to wordsmith it a little bit better. Because there are such I would hate to see personnel records, even though it's listed under there vaguely underneath confidential, to end up as public records somehow by accident. I could just be wordsmithed a little bit better before we put it forth. I would, I would feel better.
I don't know. I mean, I think it, I think it appears to be grammatical to me as is. Most of this is superseded, preempted by public records. You know?
So maybe we could, could we add that language? You know, in accordance with the Public Records Act, something? Because if that changes, at least it would be continued, it could be consistent with our charter. If that's what we're abiding by, just the Public Records Act.
In accordance with the Rhode Island Access to Public Records Act. I refer to that.
Yeah, so that's the word, maybe that's the wordsmithing.
That works.
If we could, please. It could just be that comment that strolled me off. It could be just not needed. I don't know.
Right, okay, I can try to come up with something.
Thank you, Kevin.
So we need a, we need to withdraw the motion or do we have a motion?
Mr. Casman withdrew the motion.
Okay.
I move to table this until the 27th, where we can get better wording. Seconded, Mark Ryan.
Second, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujafusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly? Sorry. Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero.
We have a question here.
Oh, we have a question?
We do?
An old one.
No, Len just answered a question live, that's all.
Sorry, I clicked that without.
Let's move on to section 903. Interest. Recognized, purpose was recognized as of interest are not restricted to financial effect only. In addition to the process of explanation is spelled out. We have a echo.
Motion to approve and send to the voters. Keith Hamilton. Mark Ryan.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I mean, this one is another case where refers to the Code of Ethics. And then it puts in a provision that's contrary to the Code of Ethics.
Oh, my.
So I mean, it says in accordance with the state statute 36141. You know, but then this, this additional language is in direct conflict with the Code of Ethics. It's, it's defined as a financial benefit, a financial effect, not benefit. So this says any kind of advantage, open ended and vague. So I just wanted to point out there is, there is a conflict with this proposed additional language. There's a conflict with the thing called Code of Ethics and the regulations.
Oh, if I may, Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Captain.
The value of having the state ethics laws in place and an ethics commission that oversees them is that questions as to whether any given individual, member of anybody can act in any particular case can be presented to the commission and the commission will provide an answer. I'm concerned about, we've had this in our charter for some time. But anytime you have language in here that is in any way even slightly inconsistent with state law. Council member, there's no body to go to to say, can I do this? And I think every school committee member, every town council member, every person who serves on a body covered by the ethics laws should have the ability to write a letter and petition the ethics commission and get a ruling whether they are able to do something or not. Having provisions in our charter deviate in any way from state law. What are good, earnest, diligent public servants to do if they have a question whether they can do something? They can certainly still petition the state ethics commission, but they won't get an answer about our charter. And so it puts people in a, in an awkward position. Also, I note the via written notice to town clerk, that's also inconsistent with state law, which requires notice be provided to the council president.
Since the charter provision starts out by, in accordance with the state statute. So it's predicated on the state statute to begin with. And now it's proposing language that's contrary to the state statute.
So it doesn't need to be stated, but if we were to have a section 903, what it should state is all individuals in offices subject to Rhode Island general law 36-14-1 et sec shall abide by laws. I don't think that we should go.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we have our town solicitor fix section 903 so that it comports with state law and we consider it at our next meeting.
I think it would comply with state law. Didn't, if the council just declined to put this question to the voters. As it, as it reads now, it refers to the state law and doesn't have anything that's inconsistent. Maybe the way I would fix it would be the state reject the holder contrary to the basic.
If I may ask, this, the solicitor, none of section 903 as it currently exists is inconsistent with state law?
I think that's part of it. Isn't the person who has the conflict personally responsible for sending that information to?
Yes.
And you're not covered, you're, you're not covered if I, if I send something into the town clerk because I think I have a ethics conflict. And the town clerk doesn't send it up to the ethics. That's too bad on me.
Correct. It is up to each person to notify both the ethics commission and the, the presiding officer of their body.
Right, so that is, that is missing in there.
Yeah.
Although it's covered under 141.
I mean, notifying the town administrator is nice, but it's not, it doesn't comply with the law.
Alright, so technically, somebody on the planning board has to notify the planning board chair. And the ethics commission.
And the ethics commission.
Okay, so we're in agreement that section 903 does need some editing. And again, I will move that we will have that.
Well, I'll withdraw my motion first.
Which, what was your motion?
Doesn't matter, we're letting him do it.
Okay, he's, okay. And so I'll make a motion that we have the section 903 written so that it comports with state law and that we consider it at the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujafusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
And Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. President, for 913, I would like to put this off until the next council meeting, table it.
Second.
I think we need to figure this out because it's been my experience that we've never ratified, technically voted on and ratified any school committee contract.
I believe that's true.
And I believe state law doesn't allow us to do that.
That's exactly right. Good.
Ms. Gavin, you.
You muted yourself.
I believe when the language that's proposed to be stricken was put into the charter, the General Assembly did not ratify it. So this would just take out, take it back out.
But I just would feel better if we had full confirmation of exactly what it is. But I think you're right, Kevin. But it, it seems as if the spirit of the Charter Review Commission was that we ratify everything that comes before either school committee or town council, but.
That would be I think the reason that
It was
Because this does conflict with Title 16.
Right. So it'll be a quick one, I just want to confirm it.
Yeah, can I ask, if we confirm that in fact, the General Assembly did not ratify this change, then is it, we don't, I don't know that we need to go to the voters. If it was never ratified by the General Assembly, it's not part of our charter.
Right.
So in fact.
Forget it's in there.
Yeah, well, okay. Well, it shouldn't have been. The truth, the truth is the published document shouldn't have included it if the General Assembly didn't ratify it.
Right.
We can fix it.
Ms. Copeland, I think, has her hand up. I don't know if it's to talk about this.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm this was another suggestion the school committee unanimously voted on. Because it, it was put in, never ratified and never adopted by the legislature. So we just wanted it out to kind of clean up the charter so it was clear what the school committee, school department's responsibilities were.
So if there was no section nine thirteen, that would be fine with.
Oh, you need to eliminate nine thirteen?
We can eliminate it.
I don't think you, yeah.
If you eliminate nine thirteen, and the town administrator can do whatever the heck he wants and make contracts with anybody.
Yeah, so the suggestion of the, I'm sorry about the feedback, I don't know why, but the suggestion of the Charter Review, of the school committee adopted by the Charter Review Committee was to strike the, including school department employees' unions, that was the only issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Alright, so are we, are we clear?
And that would restore the charter to as it was before that amendment was added several years ago, which the general assembly didn't adopt, so I fully understand the comment by the school committee chair.
Yeah, I still would like to just table it, just to confirm everything.
Mr. Kelly had, I think, a question, comment? No?
Never mind.
I was giving you an opportunity, alright, so we have a motion and a second to continue section nine thirteen till our July meeting, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Radyo?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us in our July meetings. So, and again, any, just before we jump off of the Charter Review, this stuff will be at our July meeting, but any backup, we need to make sure we get in on time as well, from, so that the information can be put up on the website, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, you gotta mute Emily.
Gotta mute, yeah.
So just to, hey, Kevin, just to confirm, we're gonna, this is on, will be on the agenda for our July twenty-seventh meeting, correct?
Yes, it was a continuation, it's a continuation for our July twenty-seventh meeting, but if we're gonna be providing additional information on these items, we need to make sure we have that backup, so everybody has time to review it for that meeting on the twenty-seventh, that's all.
Wait, I.
Okay, I.
Mr. President, I thought you said.
One more question than the one that.
Sorry.
So I know if we have like additional comments or things we want to discuss, we'll have to provide backup to, in time to have it on the agenda on the twenty-seventh. How about the items that we discussed here that need to be wordsmithed or edited, who's responsible for doing that?
Well, some of it was the solicitor, so that information will have to be provided and distributed. We'll follow, I'll work with Mr. Rayner to make sure we've identified who should be providing some of the information. I believe some of the wordsmithing that we just talked about was the solicitor.
Okay, thank you.
And if we need, if we do need to go back to the Charter Review Commission for something, for clarification or whatever, we, you know, we could do that, but I just want to make sure that we have backup in advance of the meeting for anything that will be discussed that night.
Okay.
Mr. President? I thought you said that in order for it to get on the ballot, things had to be wrapped up by the end of July, so aren't we cutting it too close, moving this to the July twenty-seventh meeting, shouldn't it be the July thirteenth?
I believe July thirteenth is gonna be canceled.
It has to be to the state by August fifteenth.
However, it must be in resolution form, so you must approve the resolution.
Right, so we have to approve the resolution.
So everything has to be wordsmithed by the twenty-seventh.
Right, everything, so. Special meeting.
So that does not actually leave us with any time to discuss stuff.
Everything would have to be resolved at that meeting, or we have to, we have to do it ahead of time, in case there are additional comments, revisions, but it has to be a resolution that goes up to the Secretary of State.
So then it would behoove us to have a meeting on the twentieth, to just tackle this Charter Review stuff, to allow you the time to put the resolution, the clerk and the canvasser, the time to put the resolution together and vote on it on the twenty-seventh, if we're not gonna meet on the thirteenth.
I would agree.
Why, why on the twentieth, why don't we just keep the regular meeting on the thirteenth then?
I feel either way, but going to the twentieth would give us more time to.
Alright.
And I believe we already voted on taking the thirteenth off, and folks may have already made plans.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that in order to not back ourselves into a corner, we should have a meeting on the twentieth, so that we can have the resolution prepared and approved no later than the twenty-seventh.
I'll keep the agenda just to the charter changes.
On the twentieth.
Power through.
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's, those are good points. So we would have a special meeting on the July twentieth. We have not voted on the thirteenth, but it was discussed.
We discussed it.
Okay, so we haven't officially canceled the meeting on the thirteenth, but we did have a discussion about eliminating the meeting on the thirteenth. So. That's it for the item on Charter Review. Our item number four was to determine if fires should be banned at Macquarie Point. Right?
Mr. President, we just brought this up at the last meeting, we were asked to bring it back at this meeting. Our stance is that fires are generally not permitted on town property, and open fires can present significant risks to the safety of property and personnel. We do recognize that there is a very longstanding practice of allowing open fires in Macquarie Point, however, we believe the safety concerns should guide the decision in this matter. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to the fire chief, who has some things he'd like to say about this. And he would be followed by the chief, please.
So let's go to Chief Ford. Chief, where are you?
Can you hear me now?
We got you.
Yes, okay. Good evening. I know that this has been a, quite a contentious point, so I just wanted to add a, throw a few thoughts in there. Personally, I look at the ability to go down there and have a fire and enjoy it, it would be nice, I'd love to have that ability. I have been approached by several residents that have brought that point up, that they've done it for years, and it's a family thing, and again, I'm sure it's very nice to do. Our current system, as far as giving out permits, is not a huge inconvenience on the fire department, but we don't have the legwork that the police department does afterwards, going and checking up on them. As far as some of the negatives or the cons of allowing burning to continue on the beach, we've had reports of the debris, and I know as a camper, the debris that's left behind has to be cleaned up, although I have gone down and checked on several occasions and have found it to be pretty clean, but I know there's a problem with debris. There certainly is a, seems to be a problem with disturbances in the neighborhood. People out there late burning and so forth, and again, that impacts the neighbors, it impacts the police presence, unnecessary presence down there. Safety concerns, while I haven't heard of any problems, I'm very surprised we haven't had a child step in some hot coals, or some coals that were just slightly buried under the sand. And again, it hasn't happened that I know of, that I'm aware of, but it certainly is an issue. Spreading a fire, while not likely if they're in the right places, we do have a lot of grasses down there, and the seagrasses and so forth, that can get dried out, and that would be another problem and concern. We don't have really a wet mechanism right now, or a number that we limit it to, so we could have one Friday night where we get twenty requests for permits to burn on the beach. And of course, it requires manpower to do it, and lease checks and so forth. With that being said, when I look at the Rhode Island general law, which is the NFPA National Fire Code, and then the amendments that, well, the ordinance that we have that supplements that, there are certain things, number one, according to the state code, to have a recreational fire, you don't even need to get a permit, but that would be on your own property, not the property of another or a town property. The state fire code is very clear that when burning is conducted on public property or the property of someone other than the permit applicant, the permit applicant shall demonstrate that permission has been obtained by the appropriate government agency or the owner of the property. So in the case of Macquarie's Beach, or Macquarie's Point, as I understand it, that property is owned by the town. So technically, when they come to the fire department and I issue them a permit for working on behalf of the town, I am giving them permission to burn, have a fire on public property. I hope we can settle this discussion tonight, because it's really up to the board. Do you want to give residents or non-residents permission to burn on public property owned by the town of Portsmouth? Or do you want to tell me, we don't want you to give anybody permission anymore, we're not gonna have any burning on Macquarie's Beach? There is none now in Sandy Point, or any other area, or any other town property, just Macquarie's Point. I know some of the neighbors down there won't be happy because they like the fires, others will be happy because they don't like the fires, but I really think the ball's in your court now to make a determination whether we're gonna continue it or not. I have to look at the pros and cons, and I see a lot more reasons to not have fires, and not allow them down there than I do to continue them.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Peters, you.
I, can I just ask a quick question, this is Linda Ujipusa, Chief Ford, would people be able to go to you to get a permit to have a fire on Macquarie Beach, or are you saying that all fires should not ever be permitted?
No, right now, they can come to me and get a permit.
Okay.
So the question, the question tonight is, do you, as the board, want to continue that?
And your recommendation is to not continue that, to just ban all fires, is that right?
Personally, I like the idea, but professionally, and as a representative of the town, we would likely be in a better position and have less issues down there if we said, that's it. We're not gonna allow them any longer, as we don't on other town property.
Thank you.
Chief Peters?
Thank you, Mr. President, typically, the police department will be able to respond down to all fires in the area. When residents contact us, they don't have any idea whether those are permitted fires or not, so the police department is responding down there. We'll then get to the scene, we'll find out who was having the fire, we'll contact the fire department and determine if this is a sanctioned fire that went to the fire chief. So it does put a burden on the police department responding down there. I will say, the times we've been down there this season, so over the past four weeks, we have cited three individuals who have had unauthorized fires down at that location. Those three individuals, two were Portsmouth residents, one was not a Portsmouth resident that was located down there. In addition to these fires down at Macquarie Beach, obviously, we have other fires throughout the town, but Macquarie seems to be the location where we see the most complaints, when there is fires at that location. Not so much this year, but in previous years, the fires have been associated with underage drinking, as well as debris that's left behind, that we are dealing with. So I concur with the fire chief that, although they are a nice feature and a nice addition, they have been causing problems down on Macquarie Point.
Thank you. Hey. We have questions, comments from counselors. Mr. Gavin?
Just a couple of clarifications, if I may ask, what is, refresh my memory, please, what is the closing time, when do people need to vacate Macquarie Point?
You discussed this last year, it's from Labor Day to Memorial Day, it closes at ten at night, opens up at five in the morning. Or, sorry.
The other way.
It'll live with it, so in the spring/summer season, it's open till ten, closes, open till ten, closes, and then opens up again at five in the morning. And then in the off-season, it's open from six in the morning to nine at night.
And fire permits are, I assume, typically requested only in the summer season?
Well, no, there's, there's no season for the fires, it's when people come together.
Right, I'm just asking if, when is the, what I'm getting at is, are these, are fires typically during the day or after sunset?
These are typically evening fires, weekends most often, and we don't get too many requests for January.
So we've received input from members of the public, some show that they leave no trace behind, and others show that there's logs and burning embers and whatnot. Is there any means by which, if you grant a permit, you can assess a fine if they don't clean up after themselves? Or is that an enforcement problem, it's just too difficult, because I don't know that you could necessarily look at a bunch of logs and say, you know who left it there, but that is my question, is can we enforce responsible burning?
Can I weigh in on that, Professor Castman?
How we could ever do that? Let's say you give a person a fire permit, that person responsibly cleans up, but yet there was somebody down there who had, that wasn't permitted, how are we gonna know who did it?
You are.
As I said in the beginning of the night, I mean, our calls down in Macquarie Beach are going through the roof. Spending, in one month's time, we've been down there over two hundred and fourteen times, and the police don't know, they have to go and respond to every single one of them, and it's the only town property that will allow this to happen.
Thank you for answering my questions, thank you very much. Mr. President?
If, try maybe, oh.
Go ahead, Ms. Abbott.
I'm just gonna, I think the fire chief, his recommendations are sound, we don't allow fires on any other town property, I don't see why we would treat this any differently. I think it's an impossible task to try to police or differentiate between permitted and unpermitted fires, and it just, it creates a really difficult situation for us, and I think it's an undue burden to put on Portsmouth taxpayers to have to go down there two hundred times a month to police fires, I think if people want to get permits to have fires, you know, do it in your own backyard with your friends, and not on town property, since we don't really allow it anywhere else. We have gotten several emails, I've talked to several people that are more familiar with the situation and got their feedback and input, and I think it's, I'm in favor of banning fires at Macquarie Point.
Emma?
I would disagree, this is one of the few times in my life I'm gonna disagree with our two chiefs, because normally their recommendations are gonna be good, solid. I think we can limit the number of fires to three, I think we can set areas, so that if you're gonna put a fire in, you have sections one, two, or three, and we can monitor it. As far as two hundred and forty phone calls go, to me, that's abusive by. As far as 240 phone calls go, to me, that's abusive by the people who are calling it up multiple times. I believe that we can do this and we can police it. We have good citizens in towns who have been doing it for years. Even if we ban fires, people, the people who are leaving the mess and are going down there and having illegal fires are still going to do it. I don't think we should be changing the history and the tradition of people in Portsmouth the way we have been doing it and canceling the fires. I think we limit it to three. We designate the three areas, and when you get a permit, your permit is for that area.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I'd like to just follow up with that a little bit as well. I think we, this is a unique area, and for, you know, growing up in the town, Macquarie Point has always been kind of different from other areas in the town. And yes, the town did acquire it, but prior to that, there was always a history of trying to hang out because it was private property. So I think in some instances, that is a little bit different piece of property than many other properties, especially any other town properties. Kind of balance here. I do concur with Mr. Hamilton's comments, and I'd like to expand upon it a little bit. I think, you know, if we do issue a permit, maybe there has to be some conditions in there on the permit regarding the size of the fire, maybe limiting the radius, maybe a 36-inch diameter, you know, which is kind of typical for, say, a fire pit in your backyard. So if you limit how big a fire can be, maybe limit that it has to be out by 10:00 p.m. so that, you know, people are leaving the beach, those fires are out before they leave. We know where you are because you're filling out a permit. We know where, you know, we'll have your information. But I think we also need to maybe stiffen the violations and the penalties for those people that, you know, if the $100 fine maybe isn't enough or the $500 fine, I think, I think we have to find a balance. That is a unique piece of property. It does have a long history for some of the folks that have lived down there for not only, you know, their generations, if you, if you're from the area, you know, that there's a tradition, and I don't want to take that away from those folks. But I think we, every property owner has a, you know, has a right to their property, has a right to feel safe and secure. So I'd like, I'd like for us to find a way to do things safely and understand what some of those additional requirements may be. So I am opposed to banning fires. I barely would I go against the police chief or the fire chief, but at this point, I'm just looking for a balance. And I agree that we just have to figure out a way, because this is a unique piece of property and there's a lot of history down there. And I, I know it does, it's a sore spot for many of the folks that live in that area. So I'm asking for some support here and looking for ways to allow things to happen, but also give us the controls we need to enforce it and police it and limiting, limiting where those fires can be.
Mr. President.
If I may, Mr. President.
Hang on a quick second, Ms. Abbott, if I could. I just want to clarify something that Mr. Rayner said earlier. I thought last year, we made the weeknights till 9:00 and then just the weekends till... I thought Monday through Thursday was 9:00, and then Friday, Saturday, and then a Sunday night of a holiday was 10:00.
We looked through the minutes. We couldn't find it in a minute, so we were going by our notes, but we'll have to go back and listen to the faces.
If I may, Mr. President, I think I have to, I'm going to have to disagree with you on that. I think, you know, yes, there's history. Yes, it's a special place, but the reality is it that it's, you know, yet another old farm in Portsmouth that got chopped up into suburban family neighborhood, and that's what it is now. It's families that live in a neighborhood with their kids, and the comments that I got are that there's noise, there's a lot of traffic from people coming and going to these fires. So we're supposed to make a decision that's in the best interest of the town as a whole. And I think we can't make a decision based on the special tradition of a handful of residents. And I acknowledge it's a really hard decision to change these things, but if we don't allow, you know, bonfires on other town properties, I really don't see how we can justify continuing to allow them at Macquarie Point. It just doesn't make sense to have it, you know, this be a negative impact on a majority of Portsmouth residents. One, from the cost of policing it. Two, from the public nuisance of all the hundreds and hundreds of families that live in the neighborhood, all to preserve, you know, a tradition for a handful of residents. I just, I don't see how you can justify that.
I could justify it by saying that those handful of residents would turn it in reverse and say there's more than hundreds of families that want to do it, and there's a handful of residents that are complaining. So, I mean, you could look at it both ways.
Mr. President, Linda Ujibusa, I believe that Macquarie Point, or Macquarie Beach, has been the center of enormous amounts of staff attention. Prior to the time I was even on the council, neighbors have been at odds, I think it's fair to say. So I don't think that we should look at the recommendations of our town staff as things that are just casual or off the cuff. I think they've really had to look at what's happening at Macquarie Point very carefully, listen to a lot of community, but maybe Mr. Rayner wants to elaborate on that. But in any case, I believe that it would be foolish not to listen to our chief of police and our fire chief, as well as the rest of the staff, about how we deal with this town property. It's been examined quite, quite in detail, and I trust their judgment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kelly.
I actually have a couple of questions for the chief of police. Can you hear me, Chief Peters?
I can, Mr. Kelly. It's in and out, but I can't hear you, sir.
Okay, so the three unpermitted fires, were those people cited?
Yes, there was three people who were cited. They were all cited. They're scheduled to go to municipal court next month.
Very good. Those over 200 phone calls, approximately how many addresses do they originate from?
I don't have the statistics as far as who originated the phone calls. And just to clarify, so the 200, we were down to Macquarie Beach 244 times. Some are officer-initiated, some are calls from residents, so it varies for our calls for service.
Thank you.
We do have, we do have some comments from folks on the line. Let's go, I think it was Mr. Echols first. I'm sorry. Who is it? Yeah. We got him. Mr. Echols?
Yes, how you doing? Can you hear me?
We got you.
So I have to concur with the police chief and the fire chief. This has been a longstanding issue that goes back, I live at Four Wampin' Drive Drive, and been living here, you know, almost 30 years. So the, other people in the council have said that there's been a lot of issues down at Macquarie, the fires being one of them. So I don't understand, and I was just down there, I sent an email to numerous times, and I just sent an email a couple of days ago to you guys. And I don't understand why Portsmouth, while Macquarie gets treated so much differently from any other town property. And to me, it makes no sense at all. And you can go with tradition, you know, but that, in today's time, that, to me, doesn't supersede all the other things that the other councilmen and the fire chief and the police chief have already described. So, and we have, and to think that you can actually police, you know, like, you know, Mr. Hamilton and the president said, to police it, is to me, you just, why would you do that? It's very, in my mind, very cut and dry, no fires at Macquarie. You already stated that there's no fires at Sandy Point. There's no fires allowed at any other town property. And it just invites all the other things that we know. It's not rocket science here, the drinking, the after-hours activities down there. And I'm sorry about the other people that, you know, been here 50 years. I've been here 30 years. Why do they think they have special, special rights that we don't have? So I'm, you know, venting here a little bit, but this thing has been going on for as long as I've been here about these fires. And I was just down there yesterday or two to eight days ago when three fire, three permits were issued, and I went down there at 10:00. I sent you guys the picture, and they didn't clean it up. They cleaned up most of their debris, but there was still debris down there. There's always fire debris down there. So I'll stop ranting, but it's a, I just, for the life, it's kind of like the deeded rights thing, right? So everybody thought they had deeded rights. There were no deeded rights, right? So just, just because they've been here 50 years, the generations, Macquarie Point, quote, "is different from other, other properties in the town," doesn't hold water with me. So they should do the right thing and vote no fires for the benefit of everybody in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I, can I address those comments?
Absolutely.
Macquarie Point's a completely different beach than Sandy Point. It's a much wider and longer and much greater depth, and you can be much further away from the seagrass that the fire chief mentioned earlier, and the risk of embers flying and getting into houses and/or the seagrass is much less than Macquarie Point is anywhere else. As far as people being mistaken about deeded beach rights, they had deeded beach rights until the town acquired the property, and then they went away.
Right.
So they did have deeded beach rights, so...
But they no longer have deeded beach rights.
They don't. They don't. But having three fires and having permitted fires, and if we know who the offenders are, we can stop them from getting permits. I don't think we need to chop off the tradition of a beachside community and being down at Macquarie Point for hundreds of people just because it's a nuisance to some.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. We're going to go on to Carl Sella. I'm sorry, was, wait a minute.
Jane was next, I think.
Excellent. I want to go to Jane or Jim. Hello? Hello? Jane? Jane? Can you put your hand down? Okay, let's go to Mr. Carl Sella, and then we do have a question that was, maybe change the type of question and...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Sal Carcellar, 63 Leaps Road. So I want to point something out. We were at a meeting about a year ago. We fill the council chambers, right? We're under COVID restrictions right now, so it's hard for you guys to sense how many people actually are leaving Macquarie Point the way it is. And to say that there's families who live right in that area that are against the fire, all the families are against the fires, is not true. But you won't know that if you don't hold the word up against us. You promised us last time that there would be a workshop where we would work these things out, okay, before any decisions would be made. That's my first point. The next is you say there's no other town, no other town property that has campfires. May I ask, is Melville campground a town property? Are campfires permitted on Melville? So I just want to make that point, that you do have town properties that allow campfires. I'm an avid camper. I camp avidly. I'm one of the few, I actually take out the permit. I very dig a whole build, fire. Anybody who's been down there with me knows that. I host fires often for families and friends. That fire is completely buried and extinguished. There are five-gallon pails of water put out at the end of the night that's properly. Now, I do see that there are other fires that are not properly burned, but to take away things that is cherished to some of us in town simply because a couple of neighbors make the phone 244 phone calls, it's kind of not really all that fair to the others that have been enjoying the fires. I think we can find the middle ground here. There's some ideas about possible, maybe make the permits a little stricter. I like the idea of, you want to limit the permits, go ahead, but I'm going to tell you right now, I've been doing these for years, and there's never more than three or four fires down there on any night on any weekend that I've been down there. So you don't have 20 fires down there. You don't. The question was asked by Mr. Kelly, and it's an excellent question and deserves an answer. If you're getting 244 calls, I do not, by former residents in town, but I implore the police department to answer that question. How many of those calls are coming from the same residencies? That's important to know. And make one last point about COVID. COVID has put a lot of burden, and I may sound frustrated because I am. My mother-in-law, who's compromised, there aren't many places that we can go with her during this very difficult time. It's a place that she can go with us. She can't be down there in the dead of day in the heat of the summer. We go down there a little later, we have dinner down there, friends and families. My mom visits, visits sometimes, and I can feel safe and comfortable down there during these difficulties. I'm going to be very frank, and I'm going to pull the stops. There are a handful of people down there who seem to have some pull in this town and have, I started with the parking ban, all right? That's one. The speed bumps exist anywhere else in town. I'm not saying that they're a bad thing to have the speed bumps. They're fine. It is very evident that some people that are getting the grease from some folks in town, I want to tell you that it's not going to go unnoticed for the next election. I implore you once again to give us the workshop that you promised us before you make the decision. You can't, we will fill that workshop, fill over 100, 200 folks, and guarantee. So please use judgment. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carl Sella. Unfortunately, I mean, at least on our end, the connection broke up a bit, but I believe we got the intent of your comments. We probably heard 90% of it. There was, there was some breakup on our end, but I understand what you're getting I think Mr. Echols has his hand up, or is that, was that? Okay. Mr. Echols?
Oh, can you hear me again?
We got you, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I, you know, I sent the email and outlined, I did, I did some research just to see if Portsmouth was kind of in compliance, for lack of a better word, in regards to what other towns are doing with their town properties and their, in particular, their beaches. So I emailed every fire chief, you know, Little Compton, Barrington, Tiburon, Newport, Milltown, and Tiburon, and none of those, those surrounding, our surrounding neighbor towns actually allow any fires on their beaches.
That's, that's not true. Little Compton does, it's South Shore.
Yeah, but that's the only one, that's the only one, Keith, right? But everybody else...
Okay, but we want to make sure we're saying everything truthfully.
Yeah, that applies to you too, Keith, right? So...
Absolutely.
Yep, you're right. So, so anyway, so the town of Portsmouth is out of compliance, or is just kind of behind the times with still allowing, just because it's been tradition, still allowing fires on Macquarie. So anyway, so I'm beating the horse here, but I've been beating the horse here for like, you know, 15 years here about these fires. So anyway, so I hope you guys will, will concur with the, the fire department chief and do what's right and allow no fires. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your time.
Don't turn this.
I guess, Mr. Kep, I don't know, you dropped off my screen for a second there. You have a question, comment? You're muted, you're muted, Lynn.
I'm sorry, I'm just noticing my hand, the Zoom hand was raised, but that was from before.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, that's my fault.
Okay.
Mr. President, this is Linda Ujiputa. Could I ask, because we were not on the council at the time, some of the prior meetings were, could we get it? I, I mean, I'm, Mr. Carcella said that there was no, no town meeting as was promised. I was under the impression there were town meetings. Maybe the police chief or Mr. Rayner could fill us in as to whether those happened and what the results were.
If I remember correctly, yes, we did have a meeting in here. It was quite full. That was, I want to say probably about two years ago. I think there was another meeting. I go back through my notes right now, I don't remember.
I, I, we do have a comment from Jane Perdio. I typed in and I, and I will read it. We've been having fires down in Portsmouth for 30 years. There have been no major injuries that I'm aware of. There is time, there's time to breathe, but logs are natural material, unsightly, but easily cleaned up. More residents of Portsmouth see that beach than there are complaining about the debris in the gatherings. The debris is monitored by residents and cleaned up when needed. I was told by the past fire chief it was safer for me to have a fire on the beach than at my property due to the rush. Patrols still continue whether there is fires down there or not. Here. Okay, so.
Well, can I, can I just ask, how many permits does the fire department give out? And how do you, is it first come, first served? How do you get on, how do you get one of the three or something? Because it seems like something many, many people would want.
It isn't, it isn't limited right now. It was proposed or at least at some point during the discussion tonight. There was a comment about three, but right now it's not limited to three.
So right now, anybody who asks for one gets one? Is that fair to say?
Yeah, chief, chief is in charge of them, I think, even.
Right now, any Portsmouth resident can call up. We used to require them to come in with COVID. We had a form put online, but they have to supply shared information, who they are, where they live, contact number, when they're going to have the fire and so forth. But we don't have, you know, five set aside for Friday night. We, we give them out as people request them.
So they are essentially unlimited, but don't you think there should be a limit? Like how many fires would be safe to have on McCory Beach? Or do you think it can be unlimited?
Well, certainly it can't be unlimited. The people, we would be within the six feet of each other if we had too many fires. But as that gentleman was just speaking, he said then in his time, he's never seen more than three or four.
And is, is that your experience as well or your observation?
My observation.
That there's only been like three or four?
Right, I could get you the numbers. We keep a log of it. It all goes through the dispatcher. They have a log of how many called in for what days and so forth. But I have never heard of any high number of requests.
So, but your recommendation is to not allow fires at this beach for safety reasons? Is that correct?
Well, my recommendation is that we have to look at pros and cons. And there are concerns of having fires anywhere. We don't allow them on other properties. So that's what I've been asked and tasked with coming with a determination. Again, I said, I would, I personally would love to be able to go down to the beach and have a fire. But if we want to be consistent and if we, if we want to eliminate that distraction down there and debris and late night parties. I know sometimes these are, I'm getting reports that they're having fires at midnight. The, the consistent thing to do is to say there are going to be no more fires. And as I said in the beginning, certainly there are those people and residents that want to keep it the way it is and there are those that don't. That's the decision you have to make.
Every town-owned property is zoned S. We could allow fires on every single town-owned property if we so chose as a council.
Correct.
So that's not stopping us.
Not really, no.
Mr. Kep.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been torn on this question since, since it was proposed to be put on our agenda. I think that there are people of goodwill on both sides of this question. I, I don't accept and, and I reject the accusation. Any segment of this town council on one side or the other that's pandering to or catering to some special interest, that's not what's happening. So for those comments that were made, I'd just like you all to know that I see all seven of us engaging in simple discussion on the valid issue. People on both sides. We have made a lot of changes to McCory in light of COVID. And so I'm reluctant to make yet another change at this time, given that for, I don't know, 30 years, more. I mean, I, I live up near the top of McCory. And I don't burn fires on the beach. It's not, it's not my activity, but I've not been aware of any issues caused by fires. If they're burning at midnight, then that's a curfew or whatever we call it, violation. They should be cited after hours. If there are other particular problems, they should be cited for those problems. But I'm not in favor of stopping yet another activity at this time. So I just wanted to weigh in, let folks know which way I'm leaning on it. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kep. I think we have a comment or hand up from Ms. Hopland.
Hi, yes. I would just like to say that last year, for the first time, we went and got a permit. And there's also limits on the size, you know? It can't be over, I can't remember the exact number, but two or three feet high. If there's going to be, you know, a big fire, a bonfire, then the, the fire team for the fire department has to come out and inspect it. You know, we had the big bonfire on the beach at New Year's and I, I think, you know, this council has been very supportive of trying to find ways that make Portsmouth special and allow families to, to enjoy simple pleasures. And particularly now during COVID, I mean, there was nobody else there when we had that small fire. You're out by nine o'clock or 10 o'clock. You have to bring in all your wood. There's not a lot of burning material around there. I mean, I feel like you should punish the people that are breaking the rules, cite them, you know? But, but don't take away a simple pleasure that is available to all Portsmouth residents to enjoy, you know, this aspect of Portsmouth. I, I agree with Mr. Carcellar. I think if you're really going to do this, you need a much bigger survey and much more discussion. I, I support, you know, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Aguirre and Mr. Hamilton on this. I, I, I think it can be managed. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Hopland. Mr. Echols, I know you got your hand up. Hold on, do you have anything new to add to the discussion, Mr. Echols?
Well, yes, only to say that those people that are responsible, that's one group of people, right? Small fires, et cetera. But there's a whole nother group of people that bring their trash down there, their construction trash, all kinds of trash down there. And, and the people that have responded so far, they haven't seen that, that part of what goes on down at McCory because they don't live on McCory and they're not down there all the time. I'm down there three to four times a week throughout the year. So, and myself and other people that live, you know, close to the beach, that use the beach. So, so, so people are a little bit naive to think that everything is, is going according to plan down there with small fires, et cetera. So.
Mr. Echols, to your point, would you concede that even if we were to ban fires, that the people who are not doing it correctly would still do it?
Say that again, Keith?
If people who are not doing it correctly and bringing trash or setting up bonfires or going down there at midnight, even if we were to ban the fires at McCory Point, do you think those people who are doing it wrong now would stop doing it?
I would think it would be a deterrent, yes. Because what happens is people see, they don't, as the chief or the, or somebody pointed out, you don't know who has a permit and who doesn't have a permit. How are you going to regulate that? So, so when people see any kind of fire down there, they think, oh, I can have a fire at McCory. Maybe I need a permit, maybe I don't. They just don't know, right? So, and so I hope that answers your question. For the life of me though, I still can't understand why McCory is so, is, is, is being treated so differently from every other town property. And, and again, this is the last thing I'll say. This has been going on for years and about all types of fires and debris down there. And, and the, you know, I'll just leave it at that. So it's just, it's a lot, it's a lot bigger problem than what some people realize. Thank you.
We got a few counselors. So I think, I think, I know Andrew, Brian, Linda all have comments. So let's just go, Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, so I grew up on Second Beach in Middletown and we were down often in the evening. I really never felt any inclination or need to burn things while I was there, but I'm not everybody. So I think you can enjoy a beach without setting fire to something. But is there any way, and I would address the question to Chief Peters or to Chief Ford, is there any way that you could strictly limit the number of fires down there to maybe three a night at most? And that could somehow be regulated? It just sounds like, you know, if you don't know how many fires are supposed to be down there, it's, the regulation's unenforceable.
Yeah, that's up to us.
It'll be us, yeah.
Okay, I would propose we limit it to three a night.
Well, I was going to make a longer motion, but yes, that would be the same thought process. I think what was mentioned earlier by Mr. Rayner was they haven't made the sign up because they're waiting for direction on us specifically towards this. So if we make the regulations to be three per night, Portsmouth residents only have to get a permit from the, from the fire department and they all have to be out by nine o'clock Monday through Thursday and, and 10 o'clock Friday, Saturday and Sunday holidays.
And we have a provisional period where we see exactly if the havoc has lessened.
We can always revisit it. I don't know that we need to call it provision.
Well, I, I, I think that's what Sal was referring to was the fact that we had the meeting in May and then we were supposed to revisit it after last summer when things got quieter. And now they've just popped up again.
So I just want to close out here. Did you, did you have a question or a comment?
I just want to know what we, Chief Peters thinks is safe and enforceable and also Chief Ford. Because really, I know we want to try to do all the good things that people have been saying, but in the end, I think I have to go with our safe, first responder safety people are telling me we shouldn't do this. And I'm sorry if you want to throw us out of office, you know, but I'm, go ahead, I guess, because I, I just feel that safety is, is the most important thing, more important than tradition. And I want to listen to what our, our first responders are recommending.
Don't be shy, guys.
Okay. I'll take that. If you're asking what we could manage or what I would recommend if it weren't of no fires, I would say that we could make, we could say three a night. We have it on a calendar. We wouldn't give out permits any more than three. We get information from them. We have a set of rules that we issue them that they, that they read. Although I personally went to a fire the other day that was permitted in a yard and they were burning the wrong type of materials. What I don't know how we curtail is debris left behind. How do we know it was them? If we had sites, you know, one, two and three, or areas, one, two and three, and they didn't clean up, do we put them on the bad boy lists and not give them a permit next time? So there's some, certainly some things to be worked out on my end, on our end, on how we would manage that. But again, I know that once I give the permit, it's, it's out of my hands and now Chief Peters has to deal with checking and his men. So I'll leave that one, the rest of that to him.
Chief Peters?
I don't think anything would change then in regards to enforcement. I believe that we would still have, be called down there for the fires, whether there's three or, or the many we would have down there. And we would still do our job the way we do now. We would check to make sure that they have a permanent file. If they do, then they'd be all set. And if they didn't, they'd have to have amended, delighted. But I don't think anything would change as far as there are enforcement actions as well.
And I, if I could, if I could add as a, as a possible thought here on the enforcement, if we are limiting the number of fires and the duration, we're already going down for patrols. We could easily adjust the patrol and go down at the close at nine o'clock during the week or at 10 o'clock on the weekend and make sure that those permitted fires are out. And if they're, if they're not out, well, they'll be told to put them out, you know, because that's where the fines and the penalties can come in. We can easily monitor a permitted fire by going down and, and seeing upon, you know, the curfew, if the, if the area's been cleaned up or not. If they're supposed to be out and cleaned up by 10 o'clock, then it should, it really should be out and cleaned up by 10 o'clock. You know, anything beyond that isn't the responsibility of the person who, you know, lawfully pulled the permit, permit and lawfully cleaned up after them. So, you know, I think, I think we just have to find a balance here. And I know it's, it's easier said than done and I know we, we get a lot of calls and that's, that's not going to change. I, I, I don't think it's going to change. So what I, what I think we need to do here is, is come up with some, you know, some, some provisions here that would allow things to occur safely and in a way that can be monitored and, and move forward. I mean, that, that would be my, my opinion. I know, Ms. Ujiputa, yeah?
One other question. Do the people who get the permits have to have insurance policies that cover the town for any damage they might cause with the fires?
No, no.
No, we don't, we don't request anything of that nature.
Actually, on that point, can I make a, a comment to, sorry, Linda, did I cut you off?
No.
Um, yeah, I mean, anybody who wants to use like a school property, like for a meeting, no fires involved. It's required to carry a million dollar liability, liability insurance policy. So what, why are we allowing fires on town property without liability insurance?
I mean, honestly, someone has to take the risk of a fire starting. You know, we only need one fire to start on that beach and the town could be liable for a lot, a lot of money. And so as everybody's been saying, it's a balancing act. We're trying to balance tradition and fun with safety and liability. And rather than decide it right now at 11:05, would I suggest that the staff sort of go back and think about it? Because it sounds like the staff is a little bit walking back. I, I thought you guys were a lot more towards absolutely having a ban. But could we have you guys talk about it again and then maybe come back with a proposal? And maybe it's going to be a 100% ban or. ban, or, but, you know, I just don't think we should decide this arbitrarily and say three fires or something at 11:06 PM. I'd like to, or something, have this come up with a proposal from the staff, given everything we've talked about.
Because it's not the staff's job, it's our job to set the policy.
Not when it comes to safety, Keith. Not when it comes to safety. How are, how are we supposed to know what's safe? Are you telling me three fires are going to be safe, that you don't need contract? I, I just don't believe that.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Gavin? Is, is there a, I know waivers and, and thing on contracts or sign-up forms aren't worth the paper they're written on, but I'm going to ask the question anyways. Is there a disclaimer that says you are personally liable if the fire gets out of control that you could put on the bottom of a permit? The, the, the holder of this permit assumes all liability if the fire causes any damage?
Yeah, you could put a disclaimer on the, on the permit form. But I mean, I think that would be the case anyway. If they, you know, had a fire that didn't comply with our regulations and what the, it sounds like there's rules and regulations and restrictions on what they can do, from what I'm hearing tonight.
I would just suggest that we talk to the trust, you know, our insurance guys, and get at least a better idea of how we can better protect the town. Because again, our responsibility is not just to have people have, or even just be safe. It's also that we have to have, you know, protect our taxpayers from liability. So, again, I would ask that we table this for now, and not make this decision tonight.
Permitted. Fires are currently permitted. So that would continue at the discretion of our, of our fire chief. So we take this issue up again.
Mr. President, to, to hopefully end this, I will make a motion that we ask the DPW to designate three spaces or three areas on McCory Point Beach. Allow only three permits per night. Limit those permits on weeknights to nine o'clock and 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday, and any night before a holiday, which would be a Sunday before Memorial Day, Sunday before Labor Day. If it's warm enough, the Sunday before Columbus Day. And if, unlike this year, Fourth of July lands on a Wednesday, it'd be the Tuesday before the Fourth of July. And we require people to take the permit, clean up after themselves. And to the chief's point earlier, if they do not clean up after themselves, they will not be issued another permit.
Thank you, Hamilton. Yeah, that's a motion.
So there was, there was a motion previously, not seconded.
So then it's not a motion.
Well, there was never a call for a second either.
Well, I'm asking for a second for this motion.
I'll, I'll second this motion. And I would propose also, I would ask also, that in the meantime, you know, and we should hear at our next meeting exactly if anything has changed down there as far as the number of complaints, the number of, well, the number of enforcement actions that have had to take place. And if there's been no change, then I think we've shown that this policy is not working.
They're gonna keep going, please.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's what they called them for.
I'd like to amend the motion so that our staff contacts the trust to make sure that we have a form that comports with whatever else the other towns are doing, who might allow fires. But I just want to make sure our liability is covered. So I don't know if I can make that as an amendment to your motion. And I, the only reason I would support your motion is that if the alternative is to leave everything exactly as it is, it sounds like that isn't a strictly more motion as opposed. So to the extent we're moving in a strict direction, I would support it, because I think there are for, against, having a total ban. But I also feel like this isn't something we should just let go, without looking a little bit more carefully at the liability and safety issues. So.
I, I will not support this, just so, you know, I think it's irresponsible for us to keep allowing it without having, you know, the answers. I think the right thing to do is, is to ban fires if there is a scenario where we have no liability. And to be honest, the, the liability waiver only goes so far, right, until the person who's living down there's house gets burned down, and the person responsible can't actually pay for it, then, you know, if we're not gonna, if we, unless we're gonna make people take out insurance policies, it's not going to really have any merit whatsoever. And I can't see people taking out million dollar insurance policies to have a bonfire on a town beach. Yet, we require that if you're gonna, like, if you're gonna have a Girl Scout meeting in a cafeteria, it seems pretty inconsistent on our part. So I think if we're, if, you know, we need to be consistent and responsible, and I don't, I don't think it's the right thing to keep allowing them, restrictions, there are no restrictions.
Agreed. You have to have like a million dollar policy to go to Glen Par, or Glen, yeah, to get a place to park.
Correct.
And there's no fire potential.
You're not, you're not going to burn down anybody's house. All it takes is one kid with a flaming marshmallow.
So, we had a motion from Mr. Hamilton that was seconded. Ms. Jafuz had made a, an amendment that was not voted upon, but the amendment was to, to, to clarify insurance requirements, or clarify if we were covered, what the trust, it was really to clarify what the, what.
Contact the trust to develop the appropriate waiver.
Okay, I, I would second that if that needed to be seconded.
Okay. All right. So, so that would be a, a waiver on the li, a liability waiver on liability, is that?
I just think, just say that we want staff to recommend, oh, to do some research about liability and insurance and waivers.
Will the trust cover us if somebody's house?
Okay. So, we need to vote on the, was someone gonna?
I, I just wanted, the trust will cover us. If we're, if we have claims or, or against the town for anything, that's why we have insurance. It doesn't mean there's liability. If someone makes a claim, we would, we would be, if there was an incident on any town property, we'd be covered by the trust. So I.
But we don't.
Waiver for the back of the permit, or have a waiver or something, it can't hurt, but.
And why do we make people get million dollar insurance policies when they're renting, or not even, yeah, when they're renting at Glen Farm, or, um, Glen Park?
Glen Park.
Or the schools, for that matter.
Well, they're having, it's a more, a more organized event. It's on.
Public event.
I mean, I don't know, I just see, having a, we have a process now for someone to have a fire permit. Anyway, I don't, I understand the, I understand the concern, but I mean, I think it seems liability is more remote than whether, you know, managing this. And I don't think the trust is going to have much, much to say about it.
We, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. So let's, let's vote on the amendment, and then we can vote on the, the original motion from Mr. Hamilton. So, all those, Mr. Kelly, do you have a question? Oh, all right. So, so all, all those in favor of the amended, amended? Oh, oh, wait a minute. Sorry. We have a.
Brian.
Brian, Brian Woodhead. Mr. Woodhead?
Council president, member of the council, I just want to clarify with Keith, who was asking about places, three locations. McCory Point is a unique spot down there. There's a bathing area, a boat launch area, then a fishing area. I'm not quite sure where you guys want all these fires to take place. I mean, I wouldn't recommend putting in where the people go bathing, and I probably wouldn't put the fires where people launch their boats. The only place I'd probably put it would probably be right where everyone goes fishing on the, the, the other end of the, near the point itself. So I'm kind of confused, bro, where you want me to locate these fires if you do pass this amendment?
I, I, I would say that you could work with some people on your staff. There are generalized spaces where they're already doing these fires. And all I'm asking is just a steel pole and a sign that says, Fire Area One, Fire Area Two, Fire Area Three.
Well, I can't put anything on there unless I get CRMC approval. I mean, I mean, I can do something like that and get, talk to CRMC. I'm just trying to figure out, I can't put a sign within 200 feet of the shoreline without approval. But, I mean, I know what you're saying.
Okay.
Well, they're, they're currently doing it now. So we currently allow fire down there now. I think what we have to do is, if approved, if we limit it to three fires, we will have to monitor that. But there, there should be an area, the, the fire area, if approved, should be a designated area that, that we feel would be the easiest to, to maintain. It would be the, you know, the, the safest location. And it's probably, to Mr. Hamilton's point, it's an area probably where, where some of the families currently gather and look to have a, a cookout or a bon, you know, I don't want to say bonfire. Bonfire is, it, it makes it sound like it's a larger fire. A small fire after, you know, after swimming at the beach all day, they probably want to have a small fire. So I think we could easily work to find locations if, if approved. So the exact locations we can, we can work on. But I think let's at least address the motion and see if it gets approved before we, you know, talk ourselves into another scenario here.
No, I understand.
Thank you, Brian.
So let's get a, a vote on the amended motion, which is to just investigate the liability waiver. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafuz?
Liability and insurance issues. I.
Is that it?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
You have muted, Len?
He's passed out.
No? He said aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan, you're.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Then on to the main motion. We had a motion and a second.
The main motion as amended.
Main motion as amended. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafuz?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Nay.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye. Motion passes six to one. Thank you all. Okay, on to correspondence.
To receive and place on file.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafuz?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Raynor?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, on to our future meetings. We still have the July 13th meeting listed. Do we have any motion to?
I, I move that we change the July 13th meeting to July 20th, and the July 20th meeting will be specifically for charter review provisions, charter, charter change provisions, sorry.
Seconded.
I will, not be in Portsmouth on July 20th, but I will be, will have access to internet and can engage remotely.
You could have been doing that now.
In fact, I think you might be.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafuz?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Raynor?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend that we have a meeting in very early August to set Mr. Rayner's priorities, as we did last year. And if you could schedule that, that would be great. I think last time it was on a Saturday, maybe we can avoid that. But, because in order to review him, we must set his goals, or else we won't know how to.
Meeting August 11th.
That's a regular town council meeting. I don't know if that, we could make that.
Meeting August 10?
11.
11.
We won't be arguing about the budget at that point.
See, 11.
You know.
So. Could we have it during a regular meeting?
I think so.
I would move that we have it during a regular meeting.
Okay. So that would be August 11th. We'll have a goal-setting meeting. And then sometime prior to that, not in a public meeting, it would be to have Mr. Rayner review. Is that correct?
I, I don't recall exactly how we did it last year.
Well, we have his goals from last year that we'll be reviewing versus what he has done and/or accomplished or not accomplished, and then setting his goals for next year. We can do that both at the same time. We could have an executive session prior to the meeting and review his performance from last year, and then in open session, go over his goals.
Okay. August 11th. Thank you.
Okay.
So Newport's planning on going in person for their council and staff. Whenabouts do we think we're going to be getting there?
Have you been vaccinated against coronavirus yet?
Well, I, I'm just asking.
Then this is as close as I want to get to you, Andrew.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
As close as I want to get to you too, Dr. Ryan.
All right. Well, for now, for now, we will stay the course with these Zoom meetings, but we will see how the, the progression is moving forward and what's being allowed with meetings and whatnot. But at, but at some point.
Just, just to clarify, I could be correct, and I'm pretty sure I'm right. What Newport has voted to do is that the town council will meet in person, and they can have 15 people in the chamber. But by the time they, the clerk, the solicitor, the person operating Zoom, everybody, there's no room for anybody else. And they're able to do that in the bigger chamber they have. They can do the six-foot separation. So obviously, a lot more to follow. We're not, we're not, we'd have to look at the logistics.
I understand. I was just asking a general question.
Okay. All right. So we've got our, our meetings outlined. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
I heard you that time, Len.
I think, I think Len beat him.
Mr. Catson made the motion, and I seconded it.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. Beat him with the motion. Okay. All, yeah. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafuz?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Catson?
I know you're muted.
I am not muted. You hear me?
We got you now.
Sorry. Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all for the extended hours. It'll be duly moved. It's not gonna, not getting you anywhere, but it's duly moved. noted. It's not, not getting you anywhere, but it's duly noted.
This is my bedtime.
Good night, all. Thank you.
Good night, all. Thank you.